And welcome to the March eighth, two thousand and sixteen regular meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Warpman Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward and recognize and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission and not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerries, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed in silent mode or turned off. Ms. Arndt, either roll call, please.
Mr. Apidian?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yeah, here.
Mr. Faison?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krenn?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Zanzika?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Looks like everyone's here, okay. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Sabatini first just to make an announcement about this meeting.
Yes, so thank you for coming, everyone. I apologize for the accommodations in my almost fourteen years here. This is the first meeting we've had to have in this room. It's not ideal, the temperature's like one hundred and fifty degrees already.
It is.
I apologize for that, but we've got the perfect storm, we have an election, as well as board of review upstairs, so we've got every room is at a premium cell phone. If you do want, if you do want to speak at the public hearing this evening, please sign in. A lot of you already have, if you haven't yet, before you speak, please sign in and stand right here and use, you don't have to yell, but use kind of your outdoor voice. Speak, fill the room with your voice, there's microphones on the table, there's microphones on the ceiling. If you speak like this, they will pick you up. And if anyone is here for the board of review, it's upstairs, conference committee, you're in the wrong room. Thank you.
Agenda item number two is the approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion? Oh, wait a second, I think there were, I think we did a review, how many? I think we're going to switch the two items on the agenda, because it sounds like more of you are here for the dog park, is that true? Okay, yeah, there's another one over there. All right, we'll take that one. So could I have a motion to reverse the items five and six, please?
I'll make it.
Thank you, Mr. Krenn. Second, I'd like Mr. Tagle. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or do you want to do a roll call? That's whatever you want, it's fine. Go ahead, do the roll call.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apidian?
Yes.
Okay, so the agenda items are switched. The next one is the, agenda item number three is minutes of the February twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen Planning Commission meeting. Could I have a motion to approve or amend? Ms. Cruz, thank you.
And I'm second.
Support, Ms. Cooper?
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle? Mr. Apidian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Okay, moving to agenda item number four, this is public comment for items not, items not on the agenda this evening. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to an item not on the agenda? That will move around along to the special use request and preliminary site plan review. It's a public hearing, special use request and preliminary site plan review, file number S U J P L N two oh one six dash oh 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 five. Proposed canine club, north side of Maple, west of Rochester, between Eastport and Westwood, section twenty-seven, currently zoned M R, Maple Road District. Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Carlisle, thank you.
Thank you, and good evening to the Planning Commission and to the public. The first item tonight for discussion is a proposed site plan and special use for a dog kennel and doggy daycare facility. The applicant tonight is proposing a nine thousand square foot kennel and dog daycare facility located along Maple Road. The existing two point zero five acre site is currently vacant and is located adjacent to the Spencer Drain. The Spencer Drain runs along this property line. We do note that part of the site, in fact, most of the rear of the site is located within the hundred year floodplain, and the applicant is placing part of their parking lot within the hundred year floodplain. However, the building itself is entirely outside of the hundred year floodplain. Access to the site will be off of Maple Road. Mr. Tomlin, can you do the site plan?
Yeah, I'll go this way.
Just to orient the Planning Commission and the public in regards to the site, Maple Road, this is the Spencer Drain. The floodplain line runs approximately in this location. The proposed building itself is located adjacent to Maple Road, ten feet back from the Maple Road's front setback, and the proposed outdoor play area for the dogs is located in the rear of the site. To the, get my orientation right, to the west is a office building, to the east is another office building, and located from this line moving back is single-family residential. The area adjacent to the single-family residential will all remain vacant and not be built upon. The only development of the site is the front end adjacent to the two commercial developments adjacent on Maple Road.
Which direction is north by the direction?
North is going this way, if I could draw a little arrow, look like that. The applicant notes in their application that they anticipate around thirty dogs a day for the daycare use with a maximum of forty dogs, and they anticipate an overnight maximum occupancy of seventy dogs. They do note that they do not expect to reach that maximum occupancy only a few days of the year, special holidays, et cetera. The building, as laid out, meets all the Maple Road form-based requirements, including building placement and transparency. The applicant has met all the landscaping requirements and the photometric requirements. They have also provided the required parking needed for this particular use. We do have some comments in regards to landscaping, they have met the requirements, however, we do ask for clarification on the screen of the dumpster. In addition, they do meet all the photometrics, but we need that, we ask them to clarify the height of the light poles in the parking lot as well as the height of the light poles in the doggy play area. In regards to kennels and the regulation for kennels in the city, they are regulated under section six point one three of the zoning ordinance in that there are a number of regulations that deal with issues and impacts on adjacent properties. These include dog waste, a required hundred-foot setback from residential properties, required screening, and requirement that all uses other than dog runs are located within a closed facility. The applicant has provided a narrative describing how they meet these requirements, and I'm sure many of the neighbors tonight would like to hear a description from the applicant in regards to how they meet this requirement. I'll just highlight a few of the items that they list in their narrative. In regards to dog waste, the solid dog waste will be collected daily and located within the dumpsters on-site, and they will be removed at least twice a week. The applicant knows that they're more than willing to increase the number of dumpster removals per week if it does become an issue. In regards to liquid waste, they are using a product called canine grass located in the outdoor play area. Canine grass is an artificial material that drains the liquid and that liquid ends up, again, ends up going into the sanitary sewer system so it does not flow into the Spencer Drain or adjacent properties. The dog run is screened behind a six-foot fence. In regards to controlling noise, this, again, is listed by the applicant. They do note that outdoor play area is going to be limited between eight in the morning to six in the evening. There's going to be an outdoor supervisor, outdoor at any time, to prevent dogs from making too much noise. Those dogs that do make too much noise will be brought inside. They do note they have two thousand square feet of indoor play area for dogs that cannot be outside. And lastly, they do note that there's many activities in the outdoor play area to stimulate the dogs, so there will not be any barking. A dog kennel requires a special use permit, and there are seven standards listed within the special use permit. These include compatibility with adjacent uses, compatibility with the master plan, potential traffic impact, impact on public services, compliance with the zoning ordinance, environmental impact. And these specific requirements of the zoning ordinance, we do find if they can address the issues of noise, in regards to the dogs, we do find that they do meet all the requirements of a special use permit. So in summary, we do recommend preliminary site plan approval and special use approval, provided that the applicant can confirm issues of noise for adjacent property owners, confirm the screen of the dumpsters, confirm that the parking lot lights, the height of the parking lot lights, and the height of the lights in the outdoor play area, as well as, I guess I mentioned that, confirm the screen of the dumpsters. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the planning consultant? Oh, this is just for the planning commission right now, we'll get to you in a minute. Go ahead, Mr. Tagle. Mr. Carlisle, do you have anything in the ordinance about sound as far as any kind of a measurable?
We do not specifically for this use, it would fall into the, more of the nuisance requirement, nuisance ordinance. If there's a problem, then they would be enforced the nuisance ordinance, but there's no-
And what constitutes a nuisance, was that defined or measured?
If it exceeds sixty-five decibels, measure at the property line.
Thank you. Whose property line? Anyone else? Okay. If not, we will, since this, I just wanted to say, yes, I wanted you to, no, yeah, but I wanted you to explain, since we have several new commissioners, maybe Mr. Mosse is the more appropriate person to do it. But under a special use, we can require special conditions, reasonable special conditions, is that correct?
Yeah, reasonable-
Everybody be aware of that.
Reasonable conditions related to the use of the land is actually the standard.
Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Yes, my name is John Azlum from Azlum Plain Architectural Group, forty-four eighty-eight West Crystal Road in Flint. I'm here with Bob Cassidy to present before you this evening. If you could, I'd like to get rid of, first-
I'm assuming you've already signed in, sir, you've got to stand in that one spot.
I did get this. I didn't sign in, but I will.
I informed him that he's the applicant, we have his information.
That's fine.
If you could go to sheet C one oh four, please. The couple of the, in the new comments, a couple of things that came through relative to the lighting in the dumpster screen. On sheet C one oh four, we've indicated the height of the lighting in the parking lot to be twenty-five feet, which is what the ordinance requires.
Page is that in our packet, please? I'm sorry, I have a lot of computer problems.
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, thank you.
Also, this is a plan view of our dumpster, which is totally masonry enclosed. We designed it so that someone could enter the dumpster through this route rather than having to open the gates every time they get in the dumpster, because we all know that these get left open. So we've taken that into account. The masonry is actually illustrated as being eight feet tall. And then if you go to the landscape plan, which you don't necessarily, we can go to the next one. The landscape plan shows that masonry is totally screened with arborvitae. So not only do we have an eight-foot tall masonry wall with a fence, we also have arborvitae's around the dumpster. So we feel that that's out of the screen. Again, the pole is indicated as twenty-five feet tall. We have, since we've turned this in, added some lighting in the play area itself, which would be ten feet tall. And the photometrics on that indicate that at no point would we be over a tenth of a foot candle at any property line, which is the residential limit. The commercial limit is one foot candle, and again, at no place do we exceed a tenth of a foot candle. Our compatibility statement is inclusive, our drawings are complete, we're going to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir. Would you want to say anything? Is the applicant, too?
Yes, I mean, so I've-
Okay.
Did you want me to address noise or wait for public comments and then address it afterwards?
Well, this is your opportunity to talk about anything that we missed in our presentation, or anything you'd like to elaborate on.
Okay.
Any information that you'd like to share with the audience.
I would like to share a little bit on, oh, my name's Bob Cassidy. I'm from Fenton, Michigan, live near downtown, four sixteen South Street. And I'm also one of the applicants. I see we've got the site planned up, I just want to talk about noise for a minute. We represent a two million dollar investment on Maple Road. Think that we, with the building that we've designed, are doing a nice job of enhancing property values. We have almost no impact on traffic, we don't have very many customers today, we don't have very many employees in the building. So we don't see our traffic impact as even almost immeasurable. Regarding noise, I think there's some folks here that are concerned with noise, so I want to talk about that. And we can make some adjustments in our outdoor play area. Your attorney talked about reasonable conditions related to the land. Right now, everything that we've done in our design, one hundred percent meets all your ordinances. We have not asked for a variance of any sort or any consideration of any sort. But again, if we need to do something to make an adjustment, please neighbors, then we're more than willing to do that. Now regarding the noise, we want to be a good neighbor, in fact, we want to be a great neighbor. You don't give up any of your rights on any of the noise ordinances that are in place in the city of Troy. So we never believe that, Troy just gets building built, the heck with them, because we exist, we don't, we don't want that to happen. And again, you're not giving up any of your rights in terms of dog barking, for example. We know how to manage that, it is something that can be managed. If it's not managed, you could have a neighbor with a single dog, it's driving you crazy. I get that, I live in the city, where houses are very close, and I can tell you that my dogs are quiet, even though there are dogs that do bark, because when I take them out, I don't have a lot of tree of fenced yard, so they're not outside unattended. And I could tell you, if I let them out in a fenced area unattended, they would find a reason to bark at something. They're just going to. When they're outside with me, it's not because they're a special kind of breed of any sort, it's because I occupy their time and attention, they've got something to do, and if one of them gets occupied with something that's got his attention, that causes him to bark, we just come back in. That's how I manage that, with occupying their attention and then bringing them in if, if, you know, they don't mind. So that, again, that's something that can be- The houses that are along, which would be the closest ones here, because our building happens to be on towards this side of the property and there's less landscaping buffer, we get quite a ways away from the houses very quickly. The resident, the commercial developments all go to here. I think, is it Pamela?
Patricia.
Patricia, sorry, Patricia. For example, her, she has a wall in the back of her parking lot, and I think this would represent the wall right here. And if she has more commercial land pass it, I don't think she does, it would be undeveloped. And then same with the, our neighbor on the west, although it's faint, you can see their parking lot, and then home start way up here, these distances represent from our building a couple hundreds feet, and then climb quickly in distance. And then over here from our building, it would be actually a few hundred feet from this house to, more like maybe a hundred and twenty feet from our play area to the house. But if we need to, I can shrink this play area to minimize that distance a little bit. I try to kind of go as far back as where everybody has kind of defined a line in terms of the commercial development, just to kind of look the same, but again, I'll, that always saves me money if I go twenty feet or thirty feet this way, so it's not something that I object to. Although it doesn't show it on the drawing, that area is broken up into three areas. Dogs that play in small groups, exercise in small groups, do much better than dogs that are outside in a large area. So for example, your proposed dog park is broken up into different areas in the hopes that they'll kind of get segregated a little bit and play in small groups. There'll be a lot of landscaping out there, a lot of toys, trees, things like that to keep their interest. There is a six-foot opaque fence around there which does two things, and this is why, I believe it's in your ordinance. A solid fence will do a few things, it'll help deflect any noise up. Additionally, if a dog can't see through a fence, they're less occupied with something they just simply can't see versus something they can see, so that's, that's what happens there. If I need to go a little higher, I'd be happy to go a little higher. The fence wouldn't do much, maybe it makes some people happy, so I'd be okay with that. The, if there's, if there's some impression that we're going to have ninety or a hundred dogs outside playing all the time, that's just simply not true, just because our capacity, so we can pay the bills, can reach ninety. You're talking about the major holidays. And that doesn't mean that there would ever be that, that number outside, because there, we can't manage that many outside. What'll happen is those days that there are that many dogs on the property, they'll get to go outside for a few hours just to get some outdoor fresh air, kind of in a shift. We have over, we have almost two thousand square feet of play area inside. That's, I don't know that anybody in Michigan has that kind of play area dedicated to the indoor area. And that's because that's where they can get their exercise. Most of the time, it's inclement weather and we don't want to go out anyway, and the dogs don't want to be outside. So they're going to get a lot of exercise indoors, they can relieve themselves, take potty breaks indoors. We have indoor relief areas built indoor and designed, they don't even have to get outside if it's raining, for example. Your noise ordinance, I think, requires us to be compatible from about seven or eight AM to about eight PM. I don't have that memorized. Our daycare areas are well, well, well within that, because we just can't even get them outside early in the morning because they need to be fed and things like that, and then they're getting picked up at sometimes three thirty, four o'clock, four thirty, so they're all back in, playing, waiting for their owners to show up. So if you tighten your noise ordinance or tighten your requirements for us, we could live within that. We do like to take them out, let them run around for a few minutes after they eat sometimes, but that would just be literally for a few minutes. So I think we're going to do an outstanding job with managing noise. Again, it's, it's not about how many dogs can be there, it's about good execution. And if we don't execute, the neighbor's going to call Brent, you're going to be unhappy with us, and we're going to get in trouble. And Troy already has many of these places, and there's, there's been, at these kind of meetings, folks that have shown up, this is terrible, and it hasn't turned out to be that way, because these have been managed properly. If they're not managed properly, I suppose it would not work out. And then the last thing I want to say, and then I'll sit back down, is if folks are afraid of we're going to have some killer dog on the property or something like that, some big, you know, this is eating children, these kind of facilities, not just me, but we haven't invented anything new here. They go through temperament testing with us, and we make sure that the dogs have been properly socialized and are really good around people. We do things like give them a toy, take a toy away from them, give them some food, take the food away from them, introduce them to some other dogs. If they eat one of us, they don't get to be a customer. So we're not going to get loose and then start eating citizens. And I've seen, and it was in Michigan in the last few years, where there's been at least one person, a jogger, that got attacked and died, you know, that does happen in this world. Frankly, I think you're more at risk of having a neighbor who is not required to send their dog through some sort of temperament testing than anybody that's used on the field. And if we did a, not such a great job with a dog and it turned out to be different, you know, I have a lot of liability here. I can't have an employee get bit.
Can I wrap it up?
I'm done.
Okay.
So that's my piece.
Okay. I just have one comment to make. I, I don't believe, any of the drawings that you've submitted, I don't know if it's a requirement, I don't think they've been sealed, for one thing. And I, it drives me crazy to see blueprints that the north is not in the up direction, so when you said the east, so the neighbors to the east have met over there.
They have been seen.
The survey has been seen.
Oh, that's Wes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Wes, I'm sorry.
And if you have any preparation while you're there, did you meet with the neighbors?
We did. We, we sent, yes, we sent out, you folks sent out seventy-five letters.
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three, okay. We sent out the exact same letters to the exact same audience and made ourselves available last week for a few hours at the community center, and some, a number of people showed up. We had three residences and a business person show up. They're, they had concerns, is the detention pond going to hold water and cause more mosquitoes, it drains dry.
I just wanted to know the number-
We, yes, we did, we did.
So you did make that opportunity?
Yeah, we made that opportunity.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Does the planning commission at this point have any questions for the developer? Mr. Krenn?
How many kennels do you have inside the building?
We have about sixty-five.
Okay, I counted fifty-eight on your drawing, so where are the others?
There's going to be a few in an overflow area upstairs.
Okay.
That aren't, that aren't shown on the drawing.
Mr. Sent, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Cruz, you were next.
I have a question with respect to the solid waste. Exactly what will your process be to pick it up, throw it away, get it to the dumpster?
It gets immediately picked up, I think somebody said every day, but it gets immediately picked up. Goes into a tieable plastic bag. It's going to get- It's gonna get put in a small waste container that seals. And then that gets put into a larger waste container outside that seals. We expect no order, no order. If there, we, we looked at a, at a site also in Troy that we decided we didn't think would work for us. Didn't have enough room even for a dumpster, and we're so confident in there being no order, that we were gonna put all our waste containers indoors, not even have a dumpster. We're, we were totally okay with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sen, do you have any questions?
How do you manage liquid waste in the, in the diagram?
Liquid waste, the dogs are gonna go to the bathroom inside. They're, they're gonna urinate inside. We have large areas dedicated for that indoors, and they get to do, they're, they're designed with pet grass.
Sir, you're gonna have to stand up right there.
Oh, I'm sorry. They're designed with pet grass sprayed with a non-toxic natural product, and the dogs think that other dogs have been going to the bathroom on. It's an older thing. It's literally gonna have a fire hydrant and real boulders and things like that. So they're just gonna be able to relieve themselves more easily inside.
Mr. Teigl?
Could you tell us a little bit about your staff training? Who do you have, what kind of, you know, age of staff, what is their experience?
Well, the, the age I can't do anything about, it's, it's gonna be a factor of who applies. I can't discriminate in any way there. I would say that we are, we'll have a more mature staff compared to, let's say, your fast food restaurants, because we pay better. So we expect to have a quality group of folks that we could select from. In terms of training, people will be sufficiently trained. We are working with a company who helps set up these types of facility out of Houston. It's a consulting company that, that literally helps open these kind of places. They also own a few facilities. They've even helped with the design, they, they also build these facilities. We'll have some folks going out there and getting trained, for example, and then it'll be, they'll train the, our trainers, and then our trainers will train the people.
What kind of criteria do you tell your staff when the dogs are outside and one or more of them start barking? At what point does the staff say, it's becoming a nuisance and we'll have to bring the dog or dogs inside?
Well, it's, it's certainly subjective, and there's, I don't think we'll give people a decibel device, but it's, it's pretty obvious. When a, when a dog's barking, you can either get them to stop or, or not get them to stop. If you don't, can't get them to stop with just getting their attention, then they're, they're gonna go back inside.
Anyone else? Mr. S, uh, Ms. Cooper, you're next, please.
I have actually a question for Mr. Cassidy and for Mr. Savadon. Where else in the southeastern Michigan area do you have canine facilities?
None.
You're referring to this area?
Yes.
And Mr. Savadon, do we, within a five mile radius of the city of Troy Premier, do we have, and do we have any existing doggy daycare facilities in Troy?
Got a number of them. We've, I believe the planning commission has renewed and approved at least three in the last three or four years.
Anyone else on the planning commission? Mr. Appidia?
I have a question for the applicant related to the noise. I think we, I, I personally kind of understand the noise level during the day in the outdoor area. I'm trying to get a better feel for noise level during the night, especially during the peak days or weekend, you said holidays, it might be, you might have full capacity. I mean, is potentially possible? From, from other facility, facilities that you're aware of, is there, or has there ever been an, an issue with noise levels during the night that, I, I guess from a building perspective, from a structures perspective, is, is, what is the construction used to attenuate the sound during the night?
That's, that's a very good question. We have a, an insulation, a wall insulation product that is literally newer on the market that's actually manufactured in Michigan, that will almost make our building soundproof. It's not used for that, but it turns out to be that way. And John can talk about that material. It's a closed cell styrofoam that's several inches thick. We tried to keep the number of windows down, but still look great from the road, which by the way, there's, the windows are in, in the front lobby, in the retail area, in the offices and stuff like that. Where the dogs sleep, there are almost no windows, because sound can get through a window easi, more easily than a, a wall. But you would not have to get very far back from our building to hear nothing, even if there was a dog that was barking late at night. We'll also have a staff person staying throughout the night in case there's some disruption.
Just one person?
Yes. That's, that's one, by the way, that's one more than pretty much anyone.
Mr. Savadon, please.
A question for Mrs. Savadon. So we have several other similar properties in Troy. Curious is, is are they in similar types of locations where they're somewhat near residential properties? And, and what's, I guess, our experience or the neighbors' experience been on some of these issues like waste and noise?
The ones that were approved, that I'm more familiar with, that we've approved recently, have been near, near Maple Road, so in this general area. For, for one of the, one of their competitors is called the Berkshire. I know some of the neighbors were, they showed up to the meeting, they were in opposition of, of the concept. And I'm not aware of any complaints from any of the three businesses. This one may be a little bit closer to some residential than, than some of the other, the three that I talked about, but there's no complaints about noise that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
There have been no enforcement actions?
No enforcement, yes. Yeah, when I say complaints, calling, calling our department to complain about noise.
Code enforcement.
Correct.
Okay, if there's no, yes, Mr. Pratt?
I didn't see any, to the applicant, I didn't see any detailing on the perimeter fencing that goes around the play area, outdoor play area. Do you elaborate, what, what, what's being used for that fence?
I think we have a choice of selecting the pre-finished plastic panels or a stained wood fence. I'm indifferent what we go with.
Okay, but it's not, it's not, it's not a cyclone, I mean, a cyclone type fence?
Oh, no. Oh, no, it would be very attractive.
Okay.
It will, it'll be, it'll be very attractive.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Do.
One thing I do want to note to the planning commission, the public, is that we have received one letter which is handed out to the Planning Commission tonight, it's from O'Donnell Properties. And in the letter, they are the adjacent property owner to the West. They own an office building, and they have, they have noted some concerns in the letter. So I just want to note to the planning commission and to the applicant, and to, to the O'Donnell Properties folks, that we did receive this and it has been distributed to the planning commission.
This looks like it was just received today?
Received, dated March eighth, yes.
I don't know if all the planning commission members would have a chance to read that, but we'll deal with that later. Okay, this is a public hearing. If you've signed up and want to speak on this, you can kind of start right here and go around, because I think the dog park people are on this way. Sir, did you sign in?
Yeah.
And you want to speak? If you do, you have to stand over there and, and limit your. I'm just making sure we don't forget anybody.
Good evening, my name is Tim Osler, and I live at the end of Eastport Street, eighteen forty-two Eastport. This property would obviously be at the head for Maple Road, Eastport. Most of the people seated along the back wall appear to be my neighbors, some people over on the adjoining street, Westwood. And I think broadly speaking, we're all collectively concerned about the potential noise issue. I don't really think anyone's gotten any objection to the business activity on Maple Road or any of the other parameters that were broadly spoken up here tonight, which are important to your, your, your process. But this is a very subjective thing. I think the only thing I heard that was specific was the sixty-five decibel noise limit at the property line, and I presume that to be the property line of the question property here, not my house or the next house and so forth. Now, I don't know how many people know what sixty-five decibels is. I have a feeling I do. I have a feeling I might be approaching it right now, talking loudly at this meeting like this. Well, my point is that nobody here can seriously state that if you bring three dogs out of an automobile in a collective parking lot before you've ever gotten into your business, just dropping them off in the morning, and a dog sees another dog, barking usually ensues. Once we're in the building, is this building air-conditioned a hundred percent of the time?
Sorry, you can't, you can't ask that.
Okay, well.
You have to address your comments to the planning commission, please.
My, my overall concern is that of noise. And I can appreciate the interior business, if it's air-conditioned, then perhaps that noise won't be emanating from there. But this outside dog facility, if I'm looking at this correct, it actually appears to be immediately behind the first house on the street, not adjacent to the commercial office building, as I think might have been somewhat represented. And once this is built, obviously, you know, if it gets excessively loud, we can collectively make individual complaints, but I don't see the business being shut down. Once it's built, it's there, and we all collectively have to deal with it. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to announce to everybody, typically we, we limit comments by the audience to three minutes, so please try to break your, bake your comments succinctly. If your comments are repeating something that somebody else, then you might want to use, you know, skip that time to talk about something too deep. Okay, we'll take this next person?
Well, everybody here.
Over there. And I apologize, this.
My name is Jim Savoy, I live at eighteen fifty-three Eastport, I've lived there thirty-five years. I bought my house on this lot because it was a dead-end street, it was a quiet neighborhood, and I wanted to live in Troy. All you guys, do you all live in Troy? Okay, would you want a dog park in your backyard? Seriously? I would not, I do not want, listen, this, he says, don't worry about it, the main time that there're gonna be a lot of dogs there, it's holidays. When we have all our family over in our backyard, celebrating something, okay? I love dogs, I have a dog. I also sell coffee for a living, and I happen to go to three or four of these dog parks and, for instance, bark about them. No, no sooner do I get than about six buildings from that buil, that building, I could hear the dogs. When I get out of my car, I could hear the dogs. I guarantee you, no matter what fence, it's gonna send it straight up. I live down here at this end of the street, my neighbor, oh, and I'm speaking for four other neighbors that couldn't make it. His dogs bark, and they're six houses away, and he has three dogs, and I can clearly hear them. So we have to close all our windows, so we don't have to listen to them. Imagine what sixty-five dogs are gonna sound like on that block.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Ken Savoy, I live at eighteen fifty-three Eastport. We have a nice backyard with a beautiful pool, we spend a lot of money, we build a beautiful duck out there with the fountain and stuff. And I commit, I like to lay out there and read and enjoy my backyard, it's my sanctuary. And I have a dog, and I love my dog, but I know what one little dog can sound like. And during the day, that's when they can all be out there, but that's when I like to lay out there and enjoy my backyard. We have family over all the time, and I can imagine any of you would like to be in your backyard that you spent a lot of money to make beautiful and your place your retreat to have those dogs. And it's rotation of dogs, so maybe these dogs are out here for, you know, a couple hours, and it's the next dog's turn, and that, so it's pretty much gonna be all day. And, you know, we have dogs on our street, we love dogs, but you get a couple dogs barking, even if they're out there playing. Dogs playing together, they bark, I mean, that's how they play, they bark, they interact like people do. And I just can't imagine that there's not gonna be nonstop noise on the street. And it is our dead-end street, that's why we picked it into a park, it's a great street, and we'd love to keep it as is and be able to enjoy our yards. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name's Elizabeth Ackerson, I live at seventeen eighteen Eastport, kinda like the middle of the, of the street. I've been there for forty-two years, and I, we picked that, that area because it was sort of like up north a little bit. It's quiet, it's private, I go outside a lot, we enjoy the outdoors. I do like animals, however, to a point. I don't like a whole bunch of animals. I have a family come over, and I enjoy being outdoors. The other concern is not only the noise, but those, but if they would escape, I wouldn't want a dog attacking any other dogs or, or any people. Also, the kids get off of school at three thirty, I think that would be too much congestion of people coming and going, picking up their dogs, and the kids getting out of school off the bus, that's where the bus, bus stop is. So I'm concerned with kids in the morning and in the afternoon, for their safety or for cars trying to turn in left or, or even turning in right, that's a congested area already. Before, it wasn't zoned commercial, and the corner was rezoned to, to commercial, and it used to be just all residential. I'd rather keep it more residential than commercial.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Hello, my name's Denise Carter, and I live on Eastport, and I am opposed to having a canine walk at the end of our street. We live on a quiet, dead-end street for a reason, I have lived there thirty-eight years, I don't have pets myself, I'm not mean or against them, it's our choice. We've got allergies and asthma, we have no pets. There's numerous neighbors from our street or other streets that already walk their pets down our street to get to the park. We really don't want a collective live-in bunch at the end. I understand you gentlemen both live in Flint, I'm not opposed to building one in Flint near your home, I do not want one built near my home.
Ma'am, you have to speak to the commission, not to the.
Okay, I would, I don't want one near our home.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is John Dovin, I live on Eastport.
You have to raise your voice, sir, if you can.
I live on Eastport, the second house on the other side. We bought this house three years ago, it was an old house. We spent a lot of money and a lot of effort to make it nice, and everybody said that it's a nice house. Thank you. We like to live in a nice area, in a nice neighborhood. And already in the morning, like five o'clock in the morning, we have noise from the industrial businesses that are, are around. Now, I don't think we need one extra. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
You gotta raise your voice. Okay. Hello, ma'am?
Your outdoor voice.
Yeah, okay. So, don't show, ma'am. This is where the outdoor one is, this property is just ten feet from it. And even the closest building they have is a hundred feet exactly, because you, yeah, go to where you can actually measure the distance. I'm not talking, it's like aerial distance. So I checked three near, uh, dog care, uh, which are in Stevenson Highway, the nearest house is three eighty feet. Okay, so I don't know why, when you have just a hundred feet from it, and the, the one you told, the Berkshire, the new one, which is also five, four hundred feet away from the nearest living house. And another one, the nearest one with the outdoor dog run is Pet Suit Retreat Control, which is four twenty feet away from the nearest apartment. The other one is two thousand feet. So all are in industrial area, only this one is coming in residential area. So, I mean, I say that I don't mind having this thing, because I myself have a dog, I know my dog will go crazy when there are thirty dogs barking behind my house. So maybe we should make it a closed outdoor one, I think you cannot call it outdoor one, but make it closed so that no sound will come out, there is no way we can have a, a There is no way we can have an outdoor run, because it will be so noisy, so... I'm okay with the facility, but make sure that we don't have outdoor run, like so much proximity to your living house, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
I'll be next. Hi, Bob. Am I standing in the right spot?
Hey, you're proud.
Milo.
Uh, my name is Patricia O'Donnell, I represent these people. And DPM Consulting Services is the sole tenant in the building that is exactly to the west of the planned canine pup. I heard a couple things that were not consistent with the compatibility report. It says here in the compatibility report, the estimated number of dogs on the property at one time is estimated to be ninety, ninety. And they, the compatibility report focuses on holidays. Holidays are a broad spectrum of holidays. Nobody goes away for one day, everybody goes away for weeks at a time. This is going to be a very busy facility when it gets established, there are going to be a lot of dogs there. What we are very concerned about, of course, is how close this facility is to our property. We are a commercial building, we have people working on sales calls, alder throughout the day, on calls to our employees throughout the day, and this noise level is going to be significant. They won't spend that much time outside, I get it, but this, this gentleman delivers coffee, and he says you can hear them from the outside, I've dropped dogs off, and can't bow off. You can hear the dogs barking from the outside. I am less than one hundred feet from this facility, apparently, I'm not a dwelling, don't know how that works. But I don't know that my commercial building is considered a dwelling. We work eight to ten hours a day, we dwell in that building, we make our money in that building, and this is not a good situation for us. We have owned the building since nineteen ninety-eight, so we're going on almost twenty years. That's a long time to be in Troy, we've been satisfied with pet fairs, with property owners, but this is not a good fit for the people who have to deal with this noise. I'm a commercial property, I'm the closest person impacted by this, this is a big deal for me. There's a lot of other people who are not here, I'm sure, who feel the same way, but when you were notified by the twentieth, the notices went out on the eighteenth, that gave us nine plus eight, I get seventeen days to develop my rebuttal to this. There's nothing personal about this, true, Bob's a nice guy. But this is too close to the residential, too close to the commercial, and too many dogs. It says in the compatibility report ninety. I didn't hear that stated when the planning commission opened their meeting. It was more like sixty to seventy or something, it says ninety. And from what I see, there are seventy overnight dog panels, that's what's written in the compatibility report, and thirty average estimated to be daycare dogs on average, anticipated. So I do the seventy plus thirty, so I'm up to a hundred. That's, that's a lot, it says ninety. Um, I don't know what the policies are on aggressive breeds, we've talked, we've talked a little bit about that. I am concerned by aggressive breeds.
Excuse me, ma'am, you're over three minutes.
I'm done, okay.
Thank you.
Uh, these are big concerns for us running this bu- business and this building.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Yes. Have you signed in, sir?
Yes, I have.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, my name is Jeff Malink, I live the closest to this facility, right on the corner. So I'll be directly impacted by it before anybody else knows anything or anything, I'm gonna smell it first. I'm not from here either, I'm from Sault Ste. Marie, I'm from the U.P., so I'm used to, I love green space. And the reason I moved to this neighborhood was because of its green space that it had. Uh, the road out in front is busy enough the way it is right now. We have FedEx trucks coming in at thirty miles an hour, and there's people slowing down to, to pull into that business. It's, uh, yeah, I don't think it's a good situation, uh, without the, the traffic being, uh, looked at. And I'm concerned because my fence is right at the end of the, uh, the cement wall that's behind your business. So, uh, their parking lot, at the most, probably has ten, fifteen cars in it. A lot of times, it only has a half dozen. So it's really quiet in this neighborhood. And I'm, I'm just concerned that you're losing a part of your city that, uh, that people flock to, to be able to live there. And if you don't have green space, then you end up in a city like, uh, that's a little bit more populated, where you have a lot of more distractions. But I can walk outside, and it's, it can be serene, quiet at night, and you can sit out and listen to the, you know, stars and, uh, you know, you, you can hardly hear seventy-five, which isn't that far away. But, uh, it's very serene there. My wife is bedridden, so she'll be, uh, directly affected by it, because she'll never be able to get away from it. So she'll have to live with it twenty-four hours a day. I, I understand it's a business, but, uh, I've got quite a few pictures of deer bringing their, their fawns out into that area. And because of the way it goes to the park, I think it's where all the animals, uh, actually cut through to get south of us, uh, into, uh, Royal Oak and Boston. And, uh, it's gonna trap that, uh, in the north, and may cause more animal incidences, you know, on the highway there, uh, with them trying to get out of that area. Uh, I just hate to lose the space that you have. Uh, there's not much of it available, and there's a lot of other spaces to put in a facility like this, where it doesn't affect people so adversely. And I have such good neighbors, and everybody is so quiet, uh, it's a, it's a nice place to live. And I'd hate to have to move. Uh, I work in Auburn Hills, and maybe I'll have to move up there a little bit, away from the city. But, uh, I've lived in Royal Oak and a lot of more populated areas, and this is a perfect spot in Troy. So I wish that you don't, uh, ruin some of the gems that you do have. And you recognize that there's a lot of people that have lived there for a lot of years-
Sir, you're just-
And have a lot of investment.
It's okay, thank you very much.
So I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, and good luck with your decision.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll bring it back to the planning commission. Uh, is it, did we close the public hearing then now, or?
We can.
We can?
No one else wanted to speak.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and this is a public hearing.
No.
Um, what do we do at this point? Do we give the, the applicant a brief time, I hope to answer any of these conditions, or before the-
We could do that, provide their, you know, some of the more salient, uh-
Right.
Issues of the-
I saw him taking notes, so. You have, you have three minutes.
Okay.
You have three minutes.
Okay. Um, our windows don't open, so, uh, and we don't have very many windows. Uh, the building's a hundred percent environmentally controlled, heated and air-conditioned. Uh, I don't expect to be able to hear anything off of, away from our property, if there's damage inside the building. Um, somebody said that there's a house here that, that's, that's, first houses, I think the owner properly pointed that out.
Yeah.
So we're not, we're not next to a house. Um, there's not gonna be five a.m. issues, uh, of noise, we're not, we don't, we don't open the doors till, uh, later in the day. Um, Patricia, you're not doing your math right.
Sir, you have to address the planning commission.
Uh, I'm sorry, the, the, the number of animals is not in the hundreds, it's, uh, many of our dogs during the day are all suspended. So if you were to double count those numbers, you might end up with a, uh, too high a number. In terms of where we hit our peaks, the, the major holidays, uh, yes, people do travel besides just for the state, for example. Um, so they might go for, uh, you know, a few days or a week, and we would have their pet maybe at the entire time. Uh, so that's, that's where we do hit our peaks. Uh, probably not gonna be a lot of outdoor bucks, uh, we can purchase this outside of here, but, um, they're with the end of July, July. Um, and I'd just like to conclude by saying, uh, these houses, uh, a few of them are, uh, a hundred and twenty, hundred, the hap- the dwelling. Uh, the nearest one's about a hundred twenty-five, a hundred fifty feet away, their garage is less than the distance. Um, seems like we're getting everybody over here, uh, that worries about the noise. They're, they're, they're really getting hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of feet away very quickly. And I'd like to conclude by saying that I don't think you have any problem with any of these facilities, anyplace else in the city. And I know some distances are-
Different.
Are different with, with residential, that, that commercial business would not enjoy the noise.
Thank you. Go ahead.
May I ask something? And this is more through you, sir, to the, to the planning commission, in that they do a lot of work all over the state. Most of the places north of here are-
Sir, you need to back up just a little bit.
Aren't quite as developed as you people are. Going north here, and dog related facilities are out in the back forty someplace, and you realize here that, that you need the dogs to be where the, where the, where the people are. And I think for special land use, one of the most compelling things to look at is, do we comply with the master plan? Because the master plan is what you want your city to become. And, and we've read the master plan, and we've indicated on our statement of compatibility that, that you're looking specifically for this type of use to pet daycare facilities on Maple Road for the future. So we ask that you adhere to what you're planning for and work towards the future and, and approve this application, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna bring this back to the planning commission now for a discussion and a potential resolution. Let's, uh, yes, Mr. Appenheimer.
I just have another question for the applicant, in light of some of the comments from the residents. Have you looked at any other options in terms of the actual layout of your facility, the parking lot, and the outdoor dog area, to maximize your distance away from any of the residences, from what it is now at a hundred feet to at least one fifty or two hundred? Is, have you looked at any other options?
That would be hard to do without asking you folks for some flexibilities with the layout, because where the building, uh, is sitting is exactly quote, um, which is, is close up to, uh, Maple Road is we could get it, uh, plus a ten plus that back, which by the way, pulls everything forward. Um, I would, I would be wo- this is a huge distance here, I'd be willing to cut that in half, which would add another fifty feet, and, and put us at one sixty, one seventy or so from, from this house. I'm, I'm okay with doing that, we were just trying to, uh, create a, a nicer experience for the outdoor area, for the dogs to play. They, they have so much room inside, that me cutting this in half is not gonna be that impactful. I can, I can tighten that up significantly and, and add fifty more feet, that, that, that's, that's quite that, actually. I can, uh, plant somewhat of force back there behind this fence, which, which is impactful for noise, I'll, I'll do that.
Okay.
Can I ask you one, sir?
No, I'm sorry, you can't right now.
Can I just ask one question for-
Sir, have you signed in?
Just one, one question, I was-
Sir, have you signed in?
No, I haven't.
I'm sorry, no, it's, it's up, it's back at the planning commission table right now. Well, we can, we'll probably make it, if the planning commission wants to hear them, to say so, and we'll, uh, change the rules. Okay, let's continue with the planning commission comments on this. Anyone else have comments? Yes, Ms. Cruz.
Did I hear that there were ninety-three letters that were sent out to, and to the neighbors in the surrounding neighborhood? Was that correct?
Maybe Mr. Sabat, I can explain how far they go out.
There's a three-hundred-foot mailing list that we sent, however, the applicant-
We got yours, we got nothing.
Are you more than three hundred feet?
We-
Okay, you're more than three hundred feet.
No.
If you're more than three hundred feet, you wouldn't get a letter, okay? All right, very good. Go ahead.
So we send mail, like, per state law, we, we send every property within three hundred feet of the subject property. I believe the applicant also reached out to some of the neighbors to, to try and meet with them to have, before this public hearing.
Right.
But we don't know how many, that, I thought I heard a number of that. We, we got-
No, ma'am, no, sorry, this is at the table.
I didn't send, I didn't mail them. Kathy, do you know how many letters there are?
That, that, that's, that's all right, I just thought that I had, I had heard that, you know, a significant number of letters had, had been sent out.
From the applicant, I believe.
From, from the city and the applicant, but, but it sounded to me like the neighborhood was notified, um, and, and could be here tonight, or, or have the opportunity to talk to the developer.
Or send in comments, right?
Right, right.
Okay, Mr. Crut.
Uh, I realize we're, we're not here to design your site plan, but, um, I was just looking at this to try to alleviate some of the distance from the, the play area to the, to the residence. And if you shifted your building, let's say another ten, fifteen feet to the- Yeah, to the east, I know, I gotta reorient myself here. Um, and had a driveway, and then exchange, flip the, the play area where it is now to a parking lot, and then take the parking lot area, make it into a dog run, you'd be closer to the, uh, the dog run would be closer to the, uh, drainage system.
And we would be closer to a noisy street, which kind of is okay, but, but, I will do that, I will do that. Will you give me permission to do that?
Yes, if you meet the ordinances, I don't think we're gonna have a problem.
Yeah. I would, I, you know, I, I can agree with these neighbors, um, you know, if I was there for even, even two years, but let alone, these, these people have been here for, you know, a few decades, if not four decades, and all of a sudden, somebody comes in, it's gonna be a squawking, barking noise.
We would, we would be happy.
I would say do everything you can to move that doggy run as far away from residents as possible. Yeah, I'd like to see a plan for that.
Can I ask you to restate what you said?
Okay, sure. The, uh, that property line-
Drive.
Yes, a driveway there-
Walking.
Correct, and then-
Play.
Play off of the building going eastward.
How much room do they have, and-
Well, it's a flood plain, so it's not like, you know, the dogs, you know, if it's a sloppy day, then-
The, um, I would just, just suggest before we, before we, um, we, we should explore that. I will note that access will have to be a discussion-
Yes.
With engineering, because of the proximity, I know they aligned this in the center of the site for access purposes. So, before we commit to that, we would need to check with engineering about access at that point.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yeah, I, I would, um, request that the, um, planner review the permitted uses in this, in AMR district. It, uh, there was a comment that the doggy daycare facilities are permitted in this district, and, um, and also, you know, what, what, what do we have to consider for special use? What, what types of, uh, uh, issues would, would be, you know, required for us to consider before we do approve this, if, uh, if we do so?
Ben, did you want to respond to that, or?
Um, it's a, it's a special use, it requires you to, to apply the special use standards, which are listed in the ordinance, and I, I went over those, uh, briefly, and they talk about compatibility adjacent properties, compatibility of the master plan.
Is that, is that in the smidl? No, that's in the planner's report.
My report, um-
Planning's office.
Is it Maple Road, and you want me to go over the permitted uses and the special uses in those districts? Let me, can you give me a, give me a second to pull this up?
Well, he's doing that, if anybody wants to take the jacket or loosen their tie, please try to be the most, this is exceeding.
I agree, I'm always cold. Thank you, Don, that's a good, good suggestion.
This permitted uses are important.
Oh, um, this is the general special use standards, section nine oh three.
So it's not in there, it's-
So, uh-
I don't know if that's in the smidl.
Mr.-
So, Mr. Sanzika, the permitted uses allowed on the site would be, um, multifamily, uh, one-family attached, senior assisted living, et cetera. Um, an office use is a permitted use, a medical office is a permitted use, um, a place of worship is a permitted use, a school is permitted use, a data center is permitted use, an office, uh, research facility is a permitted use. Um, a vet clinic or hospital is a permitted use. Um, this is different than a vet hos- hospital or clinic. Under the special uses, uh, vehicle sales is, it would be a special use, vehicle service station, vehicle repair, vehicle wash, vehicle body repair are all, um, special uses. Uh, permitted uses is retail, um, a, a bank is a special u- or permitted use, shopping centers are permitted use. Um, industrial is a, uh, special use as well as a drive-through facility is special use. Remember, this is a farm-based district, we're less concerned about the actual use, we're more concerned about the actual orientation of the- of the building. And so the permitted uses and special uses are much more lax than they would be in a normal building district.
Mr. Hudson.
During my tenure on this planning commission, this, I think, is the third or fourth dog facility we've reviewed. Every one of those instances, the same issues have arisen regarding noise, animal waste, nuisance, et cetera. And as Mr. Sabatana has said, there's not been a single complaint to our knowledge from anyone after these facilities have been in use. Further, I suggest that, and this commission is tired of me saying this, but I'm going to say it again, if a preliminary site plan approval meets all the ordinance requirements, and I think we've heard it does, we don't have a discretion to bully somebody or force them into making some concessions that they're not required to do. And I'm satisfied, this plan, while it may seem objectionable to some people, I'm going to approve it.
Now, Mr. Motzni, I think you need to... The planning commission does have the authority to recommend reasonable...
Well, Mr. Hudson's right. This is also a site plan approval, and if the site plan meets requirements, you would have to approve the site plan. But this is also a special use approval, which does authorize the planning commission some discretion, but the discretion has to be reasonable and based on the ordinance. So there's a little more discretion when it is a special use approval.
Thank you. Anyone else from the planning commission? There's been several planning commission members, three people from the audience want to have an additional comment. Do we want to allow that? If you do, we need to make a resolution to hear them.
I shall move.
Thank you, Mr. Sanzika. Support?
Support.
Mr. Faiza. Roll call, please.
Mr. Faiza?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
No.
Mr. Crant?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Tabel?
Yes.
Ms. Apahidiyan?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes. Okay. Raise your hand if you still want to make an additional comment. This gentleman over here, you'll have to come up here, sir, just like everyone else.
And sign in.
And sign in, yes.
After you.
If we could do this really quickly and briefly.
That's a quick question. I just...
Sure, you can sign in.
My name is John Hiller from 1867 West... I just had a question as to...
Sir, you need to stand over there.
How the new tree ordinance impacts this site plan? And if we're going to mitigate any tree clearcutting that's going on or landmark trees that may exist.
You want to respond to that?
Sure, I can answer that question. First off, I'd like to note that the application was actually submitted prior to the adoption of the woodland protection ordinance. So it really is technically not applicable to this site plan. However, we did ask the applicant to provide us, if it was applicable, whether or not they would comply or not. They did note that there's not a landmark tree or woodland tree that meets the standards of the ordinance, and so they're not removing any protected tree.
Yeah, I was out there and I didn't see a lot of trees.
I will note they are intending to preserve and protect all the existing trees that are located along the rear end of the property.
Who's next in the audience that wants to speak again?
Okay, let me open...
Thank you, sir.
So before you guys, looks like especially this guy, has already made his decision on going ahead and let this happen, why don't you give us a chance to go actually to these other places and talk to the neighbors that supposedly have never had any complaints about the noise? And I will personally get a petition from these folks, and I will bring it to this committee, and I will let you guys make your decision after you see somebody else that's already experienced that. And I'm going to go to the ones that are within 100 feet homes of one of these dog kind of places. Do you have one of these? I know you named out three or four of them. Are any of them within 100 feet? Because that's the neighbor I want to talk to, okay? And I would love to be able to talk to them people and bring it to you, because you're saying right now, nobody's ever complained about noise. I can't believe that. So I would like to have the opportunity before you guys said, "Yeah, go ahead, we're going to do this," and then we're literally screwed, because now, once it's done, we have to put up with this. And if you do decide to do this, please allocate some extra funds in there for the police officers that are going to be coming to that place, because I'm telling you, there's going to be noise and we're going to complain.
Thank you. Next person? Yeah, you need to turn it off yourself.
Sure, first off, thank you for hearing us and me. My name is Matt West. I live within 300 feet of the proposed facility. I have a couple of concerns. One is the noise, probably just like every other of the neighbors who live nearby there, so let me say that. And then the other concern is this area has actually flooded a couple of times in the last 15 years. The most recent flood, vehicles were completely underwater, right in front of where the proposed driveway is. The concern is putting all these animals here in this flood plain, is that something that has been talked about or thought of and, you know, even as you guys moving in there, is that a concern for you? Are you optimistic?
Thank you very much. Okay, is that it? Okay, one more time?
Yep, one more time.
Yes, thank you.
I just checked. This is from the statement of compatibility submitted by K9 Club. Just want to go back over these numbers. K9 Club will include approximately 70 overnight dog counts, submitted by K9 Club. The estimated number of dogs on the property at one time is estimated to be 90. That's from their compatibility report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I come under the council members comment that told all of the facility, never complained even, because now the facility is closer like this one. As I told earlier, the other facility, the least distance to a house is 380 feet with the building in between, there is another facility in between. So you cannot just compare with the other facilities approved, because this is an old case, and I approve. I asked the city in North River, because this is going to make a difference from other approved facilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Okay, it's still at the table?
Just to clarify.
Yes.
I said I was not aware of complaints. There may be complaints.
Right.
I haven't researched this.
Right.
I generally kept up to speed on with my staff of what's going on, so anecdotally, there's a very good chance I'd be aware of it. Could someone have complained? Yes. I did not say, without any doubt, there's never ever been a complaint. I just want to be clear on that.
All right, understand.
Thank you.
And we would ask you to please research it.
Absolutely, I will.
Because I get the feeling, and I'm not speaking for everyone, I'm only speaking for myself, I think this is an item that needs to be postponed until we can ask the applicant to respond to all the comments that we made here tonight. You can do your research, and so that's my personal preference as to what we do. I don't know if anyone else agrees with that. Mr. Crant.
I can make a motion. I'd like to postpone this item, give the applicant the opportunity to possibly come up with a different site plan, more compatible, less objectionable, hopefully, to the neighbors, mainly because of the sound issue. I don't see any other issue that bothers me other than sound.
And also to allow the neighbors to get a petition.
Yeah, allow the neighbors to do whatever, yes, do whatever research that they need to get done. And that way, we'll have a more comprehensive view of this whole thing and how we can solve this.
Mr. Sanzika, do you want to add something?
I support the motion.
Okay. Got all that, I'm sure, Kathy?
Close enough.
She's good.
Yeah, she's fabulous.
Okay. Does anybody have a discussion on the motion? If not, we'll take the roll call vote, please. Kathy?
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crant?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Tabel?
Yes.
Mr. Apahidiyan?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faiza?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Is this going to be a decision? No, it's been... Some special uses due, but not this one. It should have been.
Next step... It is quite warm here. I agree.
Thank you for your city. You folks will just exit very quickly. Speed up. We're going to...
But it's all... It is, yeah. It gets served. It's...
Yes. We have to...
We've been spoiled in the planning commission with the board meeting, we've been having a lot of water, so we had to...
I know, we got to prepare like for a table, I guess.
Actually, we had really fast dinner, pizza. So, okay, I guess that's...
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think that's...
Okay, we're going to get started, Phil. Phil, you're going to get started again. Next item, please. Okay, we're dealing with agenda item, the original agenda on down five, which is now six. Preliminary site plan review, file number SPJPLN 2016-0004. Proposed Eddie B.'s private seafood restaurant, north side of Big Beaver, west of Crooks, between Lakeview and Alpine. Section 20, currently zone BB, Big Beaver District. And who's going to take this, Mr. Carr?
I'll give the report, then we give the driver stop on a few seconds to pull up the pertinent information.
Karen, you can't close the door, but ask them to move out.
You cannot close the door, Karen.
Just ask them to move out.
She's not laughing.
She's a sergeant. I never thought your voice would sound cheery.
I'll let Brent do it.
The bodyguard doing that.
They're moving.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
The second item tonight is a consideration from the applicant to build a 10,000-square-foot restaurant with a associated 131 parking spaces located on Big Beaver at the corner of Big Beaver and Alpine. Just to familiarize ourselves with the site, this is the Ark and Jonah Plan Unit Development, which the planning commission approved approximately two or three years ago. This is the bank here on the corner, so this site is adjacent to across the street on Alpine. It's the current Katz Building, Oxford, that we're all familiar with. Existing three-story building, Katz Office Building, will be removed as part of the development. In the 2.25 acre site is zoned Big Beaver Form-Based District. Access to the site will remain in two locations. The first is the access off Big Beaver will remain as-is, and there is a secondary access point on Alpine currently, which we moved slightly north of where it currently exists on Alpine. So there's no additional curb cuts to the site than what currently exists. We have listed a number of what I would deem more minor topics in the report. However, there are three topics that the planning commission is asked to focus on and provide direction and feedback to the applicant. The first is in regards to the location and placement of the building along Big Beaver. As the planning commission is well aware, there is a Big Beaver Form-Based District, which requires buildings to be placed at 10 feet to the Big Beaver right-of-way. The planning commission has the authority to grant a setback up to 30 feet in order to accommodate pedestrian or other facilities within that distance. We do note that the port cochere, I think it's a French term, which I probably pronounced incorrectly, is located 10 feet from the Big Beaver property line. However, the building itself is located approximately 40 feet from Big Beaver. However, there is an outdoor patio area, which is approximately 31 feet. So currently, the building as placed does not meet the Big Beaver Form-Based District requirements. One solution that we have discussed with the applicant is actually increasing the size of the patio area, pulling it closer to Big Beaver, as well as pulling some sort of overhang or canopy over the patio area, so you get the distance relationship from Big Beaver as required.
That would bring the relationship of 30 feet with the patio.
In addition, and we'll talk about this when we get to the elevations, the applicant is providing for a port cochere and vehicle drop-off in this location. They partially screen this with some metal louvers or metal painters, panels.
I'm going to pull one of the color renderings that makes it easier to understand.
Do we have the pointer?
Right here. Yep.
Just give me a second here. It's taking forever to turn over.
Yeah, I noticed the size of the PDF is 10 times what we normally get.
Yeah.
And it does take a while to bring things up.
So I can talk... So Big Beaver is located along here. This is a vehicular drop-off area for the restaurant use. This is the patio and outdoor area that I was just speaking of. The applicant is proposing these metal louvers or panels, I think they, what do you call them, fins?
Fins.
Fins. In this location, one idea we have talked about, because the auto-orientation of this drop-off area is to better screen this area with more of these fins than across the Big Beaver, to better screen and also provide a building presence along Big Beaver. So that's one option that we have discussed with the applicant in regards to better screening of the port cochere. But again, that's a topic of discussion for the planning commission.
It's more of an architectural element, and it doesn't fully screen the automobile, as you can still see the activity, which I think it softens the impact of the automobile, but you can still see the activity and the movement behind it. So I think it's a really interesting approach to complying with the Big Beaver District by increasing the amount of fins along the port cochere.
So the first issue for discussion of the planning commission is the relationship of the street to Big Beaver and the issue of the screen of the drop-off, the vehicle drop-off area. The second issue, which is less of a major issue, is that based on our parking requirements, they are required to provide 136 parking spaces. They are providing 131 parking spaces, so they're five parking spaces short from the required parking, so it does require parking deviation. The planning commission has the authority to grant such parking deviation if they find that the applicant provides the necessary information that should be sufficient for operations. The last item of discussion is the floor plans and elevations as submitted. We do know that they have submitted floor plans. It appears as if they meet the transparency requirement along Big Beaver, however, that we were asking them to provide calculations just to confirm that requirement. We do also note that the primary building material, or a primary building material used along Big Beaver in Alpine, and it's hard to see in these colored renderings, but this brown material is ephes, and it's ephes both on Big Beaver as well as Alpine. We find that ephes use, use of ephes really should be as more of a, more of an accent material rather than a primary building material. So we do ask the applicant to consider an alternative material, especially along the Alpine and Big Beaver, because those would be the most visible, obviously, most visible elevations. So in summary, we do support the development. We think this will be an interesting architectural feature to the corridor. However, prior to preliminary site plan approval, we do ask that the planning commission gives some direction to the applicant in regards to those three issues that I did note. And applicant is here tonight to answer any questions and may obviously present any material samples.
Can you see this, John? Should I dim the lights?
You can turn the lights off.
I mean, I did look at it today in your...
This is all on everyone's screen. I can dim the lights if...
Please, just a second.
I don't know. I tried, did it all at once.
Which ones are they?
Right, the bean switch right there.
There you go.
Better? Is it better?
Yes, better.
It sounds better. Just don't let it fall asleep.
Cameraman's probably going nuts. He can't see anybody.
Oh. Camera, are you okay?
There's no, there's no voice back.
All right.
He's not even, no.
Yeah.
Mr. Hudson, please. Mr. Hudson, please.
Brent or Ben, we've been kind of loosey-goosey with the parking requirements. Deviation of five doesn't seem real significant to me, but is it important in this case?
The applicant indicated that they're comfortable with deviation of five spaces. They can still park it.
You're comfortable with that also?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Tagle.
Do we know if there's gonna be valet or are people not using valet, gonna use the drop-off area?
I believe they're gonna use valet, but the representative of Darden is here to speak on that matter.
Thank you.
What I would like to show while the lights are off before we let the applicants... They did provide a more three-dimensional rendering that I'd like to put up here.
That's what we like.
That's a view, obviously, from Big Beaver as you drive westbound. Is it...
That's the only view.
Do you want to drive?
The other one from the other angle.
Let me pull up the other one from the other angle.
It's directed west.
Right underneath point and a half.
Oh, there we go. Thank you.
There you go.
Very nice.
Sadie Sharon? This is eastbound, isn't it?
That's, that's, this is looking east.
Looking eastbound.
In the westbound lane.
Yeah.
Ms. Cruz, do you have a comment?
Mr. Carlisle, in your report, or maybe Mr. Savinon mentioned it, that there, while this was not going to be a two-story structure, that there was sort of a two-story element with the roofline. Is that that thing that's sticking up? Is that what we're talking about, is the two-story element there?
Yes, yes, and they meet the minimum height requirement for a one-story building on Big Beaver.
Mr. Tagle?
Ben, what is the transparency requirement?
Baseline is fifty percent transparency along any front elevation. So the Alpine and the Big Beaver requires fifty percent transparency. There is the opportunity to do what we call alternatives, which is change in facade, change in elevation, depth, et cetera. And you can get a certain percent of that fifty percent can be, that could be that alternative. We always encourage, we always, as close to we can to require, we require the fifty percent full transparency with full glass. Under certain circumstances, we're willing to consider the alternative option, but we'd rather have, see the transparency itself.
And is that one of the things you're requiring or requesting?
I'm requesting that the applicant provide the calculation to confirm the transparency requirement.
Now, as far as the front elevation, looking at that view right there, the only windows now that I see would be adjacent to the outdoor seating area. Is that correct? I mean, there may be a glass entrance in the door, but...
Those are only glass windows, correct, yes.
Kind of looks to me like it doesn't quite meet that fifty percent, but I'll, I'll just wait for the experts to tell us. Anyone else on the planning commission have a comment? Okay. Is the planning commission ready to make a, the applicant, I'm sorry, oh, the applicant?
We can turn the lights back up, yeah.
There's also some building materials that's, yeah, in progress.
Now we know.
What you have is perfect.
Yeah.
Way to go, John. Thank you.
Look at you.
That's good.
I thought you got some of the turpentine circumities.
You may, you may. If you'd like me to, I can explain what they are.
Sure.
Yeah, you need to go over there for that area though, for the tape.
First of all, thank you for allowing me to join you this evening. My name is Todd Taylor. I'm Vice President of Design for Darden Restaurants. And we're obviously here to talk to you about Eddie B's and the potential of having a brand-new restaurant, Eddie B's, in the Troy area. Thank you all for, obviously, the comments that I got earlier this week. And I, we will answer those questions this evening, including the valet question, as well as all the percentages questions. But in addition to that question about materials, so since I have those, and obviously, everybody would like to see some of these, there is, I love it when you travel, just things seem to break a little bit. This is a travertine panel. And a good portion of the material around the building is actual natural travertine. So you'll see elements such as this, here, here, which are large travertine panels. And I'm gonna pass this from, be careful, I don't want to break on you. In addition to the travertine, we also have a series of wood panels. And this is a company called, made by a company called Trespa. And you can see that those elements here, as well as accents on other portions of the building that clad or flank the windows. So that is a major element that we have as well. And then also attached to this is a dark bronze window frame, so you can understand what the window frame system would be like as well. In the tower feature, there is a glass element, and this is, depicts it here. And you can see what this does. Basically, we light this from the perimeter, so the whole entry piece here will glow for you. And this is offset glass, so it's a little bit different, a little bit unique, but certainly will give a nice iridescent glow within the space. Doorways, natural wood, as well as the question about the fins. The fins are predominant elements, and they alternate. So they'll start small on the bottom and go large in the top, and then the next one over reverses. So therefore, what we're trying to do is avoid the jail look effect that you tend to have when you get an awful lot of things in a row. So as you look down it from an angle, because very rarely are you straight on to anything, you're gonna see a lot of movement in that particular elevation. So these fins here, as well as all around the perimeter of this building, are set up in that same manner. And they're made out of a brushed aluminum product here. Now, the big question that's on the table is obviously ephesus. And ephesus is a material that we don't use just one color. And what you saw in the flat, straight elevations was simply just an identification of the ephesus. We have four different colors. The dark brown is the lid that's here. And the reason we do it out of that material, it's a smoother finish, but we tried to do it out of metal, and you get the oil canning effects, and it really doesn't come off well. So this product allows us to accomplish what we want in a different texture. This is much more dense in the texture piece, where this becomes very smooth around the lid of the element. The other textures that you have, three different colors, a dark green, kind of a beige and a tan color. They change throughout the building. So as opposed to having a sea or a big field of what would be determined as ephesus, we change the color, as well as we change the scoring of it. So therefore, you're gonna have on the backside of the building large panels that are scored at the horizontal banding versus other areas of the building would not receive that. So you'll see some of the ephesus material up in here. It doesn't have the scoring. But lower into the building, we tend to start to bring some of those elements into play, because we didn't want it to come off as a large amount of ephesus, but certainly, a variety of different colors within the palette. So these represent those three different colors there. Do me a favor.
Yeah.
Can we go back into your menu? Go under the... How, this one, is this one down?
This one?
Yeah. Now, I'm gonna, I'm showing this to you all.
Sure, sir, that you pay for that, sir.
I will, I'll try. I'm showing this to you so that you have a better understanding of what Eddie B's is. Because a lot of you do not know, because we don't have anything in this particular area. Currently, I have sixteen Eddie B's restaurants. The seventeenth one is currently under construction in Kansas City. We've got several other ones that are coming on board relatively quickly. And this year's program includes the one in Kansas City, one in downtown Pittsburgh, and then hopefully, this one in Troy. Eddie B's is a prime seafood restaurant. Really taken from some of those great classic seafood restaurants that you have seen in the past of New Orleans, Boston, the San Francisco area. It enchants diners with the emphasis of really great seafood, prime steaks, so therefore, you're gonna get a really good cut of beef. You also have a raw bar that just kind of helps pull all the different ingredients together. It is a little bit different. It's kind of a swanky nightclub-y feel. It goes back to the nineteen twenties, nineteen thirties, when there were, age when there were speakeasy restaurants, or speakeasy different types of environments. We also have a three-piece jazz band that plays every single night in the V Lounge. So it brings together entertainment and fine dining within the same environment. This building here is Orlando, which is about a thousand square foot bigger than this particular building that we're building in Troy. But I brought it here because it is really, this building just shrunk down a little bit more. So you can see the emphasis of the element in the feature, which is the water element when you first come up. This porticoche is a little bit smaller than yours because of the setback requirements. So what happens here is that this will actually span out a little bit larger, and you circle around it. But the idea was that you have this element here and these materials tied together. So you can see the luminescence of this element, the energy that's created in the fountain itself, as well as then the elements that are on the perimeter, such as those fins, how they start this rhythm as you work down the restaurant. This is a key component for us. It really draws you in. So off of the West Big Beaver Street, we want to make sure that this is what is seen. And so it really pulls you into the restaurant. And although it's tucked back a little further underneath the porticoche, we believe it still has enough energy that it will do just that. We highlight a lot of our landscaping in different colors. Blue has been a color that I've used a lot in the past because it's different, and it just separates itself from the building, and it creates a nice, cool effect in the building itself. So you start to see a combination of these elements and the materials as they tie together across the board, from the travertine panels that are here, to the aluminum fins, to the Trespa wood up top, all the lighting that ties into it. This building will come to life. And that's what we expect it to do here in Troy. So here's a couple interior shots, just so that you understand the level of finish on the interior. Even though that wasn't part of the program, I wanted you to understand the brand itself and how what we try, we take from the outside and we bring it right into the inside. So this is the V Lounge, which is the first thing that you see when you first come into the building. The three-piece jazz band in this particular restaurant is tucked back in the corner here. The bar itself wraps completely around, and it is a racetrack bar, so therefore, the seating all the way around the bar gestures their will be in this particular restaurant.
What was the element just over to the left?
This is a large glass, stacked glass piece right adjacent to the hostess stand. So this is the backdrop to the host stand. So that way, when you come in, this is a restaurant where there's a lot of discovery. There's multiple levels in this restaurant. So when you first come in, you're coming in on one level, and the V Lounge is tucked behind this particular element as you enter into the restaurant. So as you come further into the V Lounge, you'll see a variety of the tables, the high tops, as well as the other elements that tie into the restaurant. This is what's called a speakeasy room. And just like in this restaurant, there's also one in the Troy restaurant. There's a little door, a little window that's there that you open up after you've knocked on there, so that you can have a... I can close this room off completely, and no one knows anybody's in that space. So if you want to have a private event, you can have it, just like it was back in the days of prohibition, when they had private events that took place. So we're creating that same type of an experience here in this restaurant.
What is the capacity for that room?
This restaurant here holds twelve to fourteen people.
Would be similar in Troy.
This is, this is a view looking from the host stand as you look out over the main dining area. There is a large two-story wine, or a single-story wine space here that you actually enter and walk through to transition between levels, as well as different types of experiences throughout. There is an oyster bar in this particular restaurant, but it has been removed in the prototype only in the sense that it's not the most desirable seats that we have in the house, especially in the proximity to the closest to the front door. So we've moved this and we've turned this into other spaces that you'll see in your restaurant. So this is a view looking back across the dining room from what is also defined as a private dining room, and we have two private dining rooms in the Troy plan. So you're standing here, and you look back up. This is the large wine room. This is the open expo kitchen line. All of our kitchens in this brand are open. So even though they're closed down with glass to control the noise, there's a lot of energy that happens from just watching what takes place in the kitchen, as well as the V Lounge, which is right through here, and on the other side of this element here, the energy pushes right into the restaurant. So even if you just like jazz, but you don't want to be in the bar itself, you get to experience it just the same in most every single part of this restaurant. So this is another view looking out across the main dining room and down the hall. Once again, the wine room that's here, and just some different architectural features that you'll find. This is a privacy wall that screens the restrooms as you enter into the men's and women's restroom. And in this particular case, in this restaurant, we, because there was a lake feature that's back here, we created an outdoor dining experience. And these are large, these are glass doors that were here, similar to what you have in the restaurant today that we're building in Troy, and these actually pull back and open up completely. So in this particular case, as this restaurant was set up, this is a private dining room that opens up to an outdoor patio that's here, and this was that experience that you had in that restaurant. So what we try to do is create the experience and atmosphere that brings a lot of different things together, but allows you to experience those particular elements. So our hope is that, obviously, this is when we're looking to bring this restaurant to Troy. In this brand of next gen. So I think you saw the materials, and you better understand those. If you'll do me one favor, and go back to transparency calculations. What this represents is the requirement that was made of both windows, as well as architectural features and being able to utilize those. And that there's a different calculation for each of those, and I'm sure you all know what that happens to be. But this happens to be, we get a hundred percent credit here, and we only get eighty percent of fifty percent on this, on these calculations. So what this adds up to, and this is the Alpine Road, and this is West Big Beaver, fifty-five percent glazing on that particular side. And we're only taking it based upon what I'm, I'm to understand, from eight foot down. So therefore, that's my, that's my cone that I have to work within. Everything above that can be solid, but eight foot is that, that rule that we have to work within. So on the Big Beaver side, even though it looked like it wasn't a lot of transparency, it does calculate out as fifty-five percent. And on the other side, which is the Alpine Street side, we're at fifty percent. And this information is all gonna be transferred to your team, so that you guys can analyze it and go through it to make sure that my math is correct, and I'm banking on that it is. But certainly, we wanted to provide that, because that was one of the requirements that was submitted back to us. Yeah. Because it's really, it's easy to go through this this way. Hit the site plan render. There were a couple things that were talked about in the report that was put together and sent back to us, and I just wanted to bring them up and talk a little bit about them. One was the fact that there was a thirty-inch-high wall originally that was shown. And it was shown right here as an area of blocking this. And what we've done is we've removed that thirty-inch wall, and we're actually gonna put a hedge that will be thirty inches, which is an alternate option that we had based upon the criteria that was set for. This wall here, there is a six-foot stone fence that actually runs across this back property. We're not gonna remove that. What we are gonna do is landscape it, so we'll soften the edge and make it look nice. We'll put a new coat of paint on it. We'll dress it up a lot. So therefore, it really provides that separation between the residential community and our area here.
And that's an existing wall?
The existing wall is there, and it actually is in very good shape. So we're gonna certainly take advantage of that. Transformer vault was here, and that was one of the criteria that we needed to certainly screen. And that will be screened, as well as adding additional tree on this particular run. The one question that I, that I wasn't quite sure of and needed to get some clarity on is right here, we want this view here to see this element, because this is where that water feature was. So the concern is, as we talked about additional fins that would wrap around here, I'm very conscious about making it look too closed in and making it look a little bit like a jail, like we talked about before, as I mentioned. So the idea is, I think that I have really good closure in of that space based upon the fins that we've placed, especially since they alternate in size, so that you're not gonna necessarily be looking at it and seeing everything that's happening right through. It's blocked from your view, in your, in your line of sight. But being able to, to control and address... But being able to, to control and, and address the vehicular traffic in here as cars will come in, valet and come out, we wanted to make sure that we provided that. But I think that the feature that's here with some plantings around it, as well as that water feature, is critical to us now. During the winter months, obviously, water won't run, but we will plant that zone and we'll do, we'll dress it up very nicely for the holiday seasons or especially during the colder months, and we'll make it look appropriately appropriate. We have a similar thing in Kansas City where it's the city of fountains and you, they wanted a fountain, but they also recognize the fact that they can't run a fountain year-round. So we'd have to address all of those various elements. So from the questions that came up in the site plan review, I think we've hit most of those, if not all of those, in this conversation here. What we're hoping for is that you will agree with us that the building, in the way it's currently designed, with the materials that have EPAS as kind of a secondary material in multiple colors, the accents in both the stone and the Trespa wood and how they're positioned allows us to have those elements step forward. And that's important to us as opposed to simply just having a building that is a standard building. We wanted to have a lot of play with it. So you'll see an awful lot of character, and that's why there's so much change in elevation or in, in the plane of that particular building. To address the concern about bringing this forward, I have no concern, no, no problems whatsoever bringing it to 30 foot, 30 feet from the curb. I would like to discuss with you the option of not necessarily putting a lid over that to this particular point. Let it sit back a little bit. And the reason is, is that what I'd like to do out here on this patio is we want to bring some umbrellas and some different things out there so it engages the pedestrian here as they're walking along the street, and they'll want to come into this because they see the energy. If you have a lid that's there as a roof, but you have stuff going underneath, I don't get the same effect. So what we're trying to do is bring some energy here. With that also is included fire pits and a variety of other elements that I really would like to bring into this environment. So therefore I get not just four or five months of outdoor space, I get six or seven months of outdoor space, and that's important to us as well. So my hope is, is that you will agree with the direction of the building, also allow us to move the building forward a little bit, which was the requirement, but not necessarily bring that lid over it because I'm afraid that that's going to close this in a little bit too much. As far as the question on valet, yes, this is a valet-driven experience. 95, if not more, percent of our guests valet, especially since it's front and center. They would rather come here, especially when you're paying right around $100 a plate if you have a couple glasses of wine and a nice meal. You certainly are not going to want to have your wife walk from here to here to come into the building. But as part of the requirements, there is a walkway that is down here. So you walk through this colonnade to get from the parking area all the way back into the porticoche and into the restaurant, if indeed you do have those few guests that do prefer to walk up. But the majority of them will valet. Valet is complimentary, so it's not a big issue. It's simply by tips, and that's how we, we take care of it as a brand.
So there is no rear entrance to this building?
There is a, no rear entrance, entrance from a guest perspective.
From the parking area?
From the parking area, you walk down this way to get into here. There is access in the back, but that's only because of, for means of egress. There is this area here and here is those two PDRs, private dining rooms, and there's emergency exit right here. This is a sidewalk that takes you out, if indeed you need to get out that way. But it's not, it wasn't, it was, the requirement as we understood it was, there didn't need to be rear access, there needed to be a pathway to get to the front from the rear parking lot if we needed to have, to provide that accessway that way.
How wide is it, how, it's the hall?
How wide, how, how wide is this? Five feet. So it's really good size. And there is an opening through this stone wall that's here. This is all travertine, and there's an opening that's through there, as well as there's an opening through this one here. So those travertine monolithic type of, of panels actually allow you to penetrate and walk right through them. So we've tried to bring those elements as the, as the means of kind of bringing this whole building together.
Is there any windows in that hallway on the left side?
No, and the reason there's none is this is kitchen right here, and this is-
Oh, I'm talking about the outside.
The outside here?
No, 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 no. That same column.
That's why kitchen.
Right here?
Yeah.
This is all kitchen.
But you're talking about people coming down through that walkway from the rear of the building?
I know.
I think it's just opened down.
This is, this is, this is open, these are the fins that are all down here. So this-
Oh, there are windows.
There are windows, no. This is, this is simply just an opening that you see.
Oh, it's not enclosed?
It's not enclosed. Okay? So this is outdoor space that's here. My building line is all here, and this allows you to come through that as outdoor space.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant, Mr. Tagel?
I've got a couple.
Certainly.
That hedge around that porticoche, that's going to be to the, to the right of that. Yeah, that hedge, is that above headlight because you're going to have two opposing traffic for even the tall SUVs?
Yeah, we're, we're going to try to bring, there are certain areas that I know I need to bring up high, so this would be one that we would certainly have a little bit higher hedge. This one I'd like to keep a little bit lower so I can see this in, but this would be higher back here. So I'm going to step these accordingly. So this would be a little higher here, this would be higher, and this would be higher, but this would be low.
Okay. Another question.
Sure.
The, on Alpine, I'm going to go up there because it's a lot easier than just kind of guess. Right now, this is a muddy patch. If what happens is traffic here now goes across this mud into here, what I suggest, because you're going to have a lot of traffic flow out here and you've got the bank, this is the, this, people coming out of the bank, they come out this way, so you're going to have, this is a congested spot in the future. What I suggest is that you take this line of, of the pavement and bring it all the way back to your entrance so that when people do come in and come out, there, you don't have that tight, constrained area right there.
Okay. Understand? Yes, sir.
Do you have another similar type of restaurant? I'm talking about Carabas and, oh, what's the other one?
Bonefish.
Where?
My competition.
Yes, right. Where you enter, you have to go in an exposed area and being a really senior citizen, I'm not crazy, but I want to get into a restaurant of this kind, and I had parked out there. I think you should definitely consider enclosing that long hallway because I know when I, the first night I was at the other one over there at Bonefish and everything, it was a terrible snowstorm. And my wife and I really considered not even bothering to go. So I think you should consider doing that if that's at all possible.
May I respond?
Sure, please.
Difference in Carabas and Bonefish, they do not have valet. They're a casual dining brand. This is a fine dining experience.
Good point.
The, the porticoche and the drop-off for the valet is what we hope you and your wife will always use so that you're not going back in here and parking in this area and you have to walk on those cold days down to the restaurant.
So where do your valet, where is the designated area for the valet parking in the parking lot? Is that right up close?
Typically the valets will, will leave these and fill these last, and we'll fill all of these first. So the valet runners will take and get the cars in there. So they'll fill this area back in here first and then come up and, and fill these last.
Mr. Sanzeca?
Yes, I have to compliment you on the building. It's just absolutely magnificent.
Thank you.
Really feel that you've done a great job. However, I'm the site plan person, quite honest. And I'm looking at the site and the, the architectural, or the landscape features that you're providing, and also the, the stormwater management. And I, and I noticed that on your plan, it's all underground storage. And I, I guess I'd like to, I wondered what, if you've considered any bioswells or any rain gardens or any type of features where you have the trees in the parking lot to manage the stormwater. Because I, I, you know, and I really, it's hard to tell on the plan, you know, where the trees are on the islands, how, what the details of that are. But it's, you may be able to reduce some of your underground retention if you did, if the soils allow you to do more infiltration and to have mild grasses and bioswells and those types of features on the, on your site. And it's absolutely beautiful when it's well done, and I think it would be a great asset to your development if you might consider that.
Thank you. I happen to have my landscape architect and civil engineer here, so he can certainly address any of those questions for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Tom Devon with Ballast Engineering, and like Tom said, I'm a landscape architect and also the project manager on this job. And what we're looking at doing in the landscape islands is we're doing some, some agro and larger rocks in there with some native grasses, so it's kind of a, kind of a sea feel to them. We have done that in the past where we've used the landscape islands as bio-retention and that, a number of projects, especially Ann Arbor, it's, it's required down there. So like you said, we've got our underground detention in this area. You know, it's something we can look at. I think it's, you know, it's, at least channel the water through there so that it at least slows it down. You know, maybe we can channel this water through that so it's filtering it and slowing it down so that before it enters the system that it's, it's treating it a second time. So there's a number of things we can look at, that's a possibility to me.
Yes, I support Mr. Sanzeca's suggestion. Anyone else? Mr. Tagel?
Yes, I will also compliment you on the building architecture. One question I have, have you used other materials in, in place of the EPAS in other projects throughout the country?
No, we have not at this particular point. We've used this particular material, and EPAS is, is a trade name. Stow is another trade name. There's a lot, stucco basically is the basic-
I understand.
-component is there. And we use it because it is a, it gives us good insulation quality, especially in climates such as this. It allows us to do an awful lot of things with it, and we do an integral color, so therefore it's not just painted on the surface. This is a through color, which I think will, it allows us to last the test of time a lot longer. But the answer to your question is no, we have not. We have explored other things, but we haven't found that material that we really like as much as this particular product.
Have you explored cement fiber panels? Hardy is a manufacturer of, a large manufacturer, or Lucabond, which is a metal panel system, both giving you qualities equal to or exceeding the stucco as far as longevity and insulation?
I've used Hardy on, Darden Restaurants has seven different brands. You know us as Olive Garden, we used to have Red Lobster, and the exterior of Red Lobster's is all Hardy panel, as well as Longhorn Steakhouse uses an awful lot of Hardy panels a day. So we're, I'm very familiar with that product, and we have looked at it on those brands. In this particular brand, we didn't feel that it elevated the brand and it matched up with what the quality of this product was. So we were trying to keep it and keep it separate from this particular brand here. Lucabond panels I'm familiar with. The Trespa itself, which is that, the large tower itself, is a synthetic material as well, but it's a very durable material, which, which really works very well for us. What I was trying not to do is do too much of different things, not allow those little jewels like the Trespa or the travertine and the aluminum fins and such, and so on and so forth, to really be the special features and to stand out. And by adding in another, another material like an Lucabond panel, I was afraid that we were pushing it too far because it would contradict with the aluminum that we already currently have in the fins that is a repetition element.
Well, it's not a deal breaker, but my professional opinion is that you stepped from a very high-quality materials with the travertine, the exposed metal, to a stucco or an EPAS system that's used in the most cost-effective buildings I've ever seen. We'll get developers coming in here using that stuff because it's inexpensive. And so I think there's a huge gap in the materials that you're using that's fronting, you know, Big Beaver and the ones you're putting down Alpine in the back of your building, just a professional opinion. The other opinion I'll give you, you said the porticoche is larger than what you have in, was it Miami?
Orlando.
Orlando. We have a lot of cloudy days here, and I think during the daytime, that area underneath that porticoche is going to seem very cavernous and very dark. At night, obviously, you'll have it lit and it'll be bright. Have you considered putting any kind of skylight in portions of that porticoche to bring a little bit of daylight into that area during the daytime?
Very good point, and yes, there are. Where the fins are around the centerpiece, they actually penetrate through the lid, so there's a cutout in that area, so actually the fins will, will run through. And that happens in several different locations. So I don't just stop the fins at the underside. We allow them to, to penetrate that particular line. We do use, this project or this brand uses 100% LED lighting, so those lights will be on underneath the porticoche most of the time. We're also only open from four o'clock until 11 o'clock.
I understand.
So it's a, it's an evening restaurant.
But it's the image that you, I don't know, 100,000-plus cars go up and down Big Beaver a day. It's the image people drive by saying, hey, let's try that thing for dinner sometime. And I didn't, you know, if you have skylights, that's great. I didn't pick them up on your renderings. Your renderings look very dark, and that's why I was making the observation.
That's a good point.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the client commission?
I'll go for a second.
Great, please.
The development to the east has pedestrian lighting in front of all the stores, and have you considered any kind of pedestrian, I realize it's, you're not getting pedestrian traffic into your restaurant, except for me because I just live five houses north of here, but along that sidewalk, it'll be nice to see some pedestrian lighting just to, again, add that kind of, I've arrived at a place.
Drive back and go back to menu. See what says, and a site baller here?
Yeah. Okay, so you've got some.
So there is a, in that area that was the green space around there, there were three ballers that were identified. We can certainly expand that along that walkway. There are, there's a baller that's there that will light that sidewalk, as well as then there are overhead lights that will light the entire site. So the old lamps that are there today, those old pole lights, we'll all take, we'll take all those down and we'll reset those with a brand-new contemporary-looking light fixture.
Yeah, but along the sidewalk, can you-
In the sidewalk, we'll look at that. We have three of them identified around there, but certainly I understand your point of view, especially since the goal along with, with Brent and I when we started talking about this project was really to engage the pedestrian-
Right.
-and really bring them along, and that's why my position on the lid over the patio is so strong because I want to engage them and bring them in. And I think that if we can find a way to do that, then we've accomplished everything that we set out to do, which is have a beautiful-looking restaurant, but also bring the guests in, not just from the vehicular format, but also from the pedestrian format.
I noticed this one is 22 feet in height. I hope we're not using that for pedestrian parking.
No, we're not.
That's really high.
Is it inches or?
The inches, 22 inches.
Oh, that's really low.
That would be a really short light.
That would, right. Okay.
Did I hear you say menu? That Brett has a menu?
No. He doesn't, but I can certainly provide you a menu if you'd like one. Actually, if you like one, if you go online and go under Eddie B's-
Okay.
-you'll see the menu, it's posted there, and you'll get a sense of, of what's there. And I will tell you, if you like chile and sea bass, it's the best you've ever had. It's done in Hong Kong style. I feel like I'm promoting the restaurant. Really great seafood. The halibut is phenomenal, as well as the sea bass. Their swordfish is, is incredible. Their steaks, they use prime sea, prime cut, so it's not choice, it's prime. It's also wet age versus dry age, so there's a difference between Capital Girl is the other one of our brands, which actually does dry aging. In Eddie B's, they do wet aging, which is a whole different process, but they use primey as well. So it'll give you a different feel, and their bone-in ribeye is, is phenomenal. Also, one last thing, if you're looking for something, if you have a sweet tooth, never pass up on the Bananas Foster. You've never had it any other way except for the way it's done here.
Were all of us dessert freaks?
Yeah, me too.
Well, I can see this is going to cost me a lot of money.
Yeah.
We're going to be frequenting this place.
We hope so.
Okay. We took care of the dumpster, no, the dumpster, you talked about the screening, didn't you? I guess we, we're at the point to either discuss, do we have a resolution or do we want them to come back until we can, so we can get a sense of what they have about the comments that we have? Do we want to do that? What's your, what's your pleasure, commission?
You know, this is a well-known corporation.
Yeah.
I, I think both of the applicants understand, and I don't, I don't feel we have to double check on them. I think Brent, somebody took notes about the, I'm talking about the widening of Alpine, pedestrian lighting along the side. These are my little things. Phil Sanzeca would like some of the stormwater retention areas that are a little more natural-looking kind of stuff. Comments about the EFS or the dry it or whatever you want to call it. I can agree with Mr. Tagel on that. I mean, I realize you've already got everything kind of locked in, but this is an exclusive place. And to use dry it, you know, even the guys, the little Joe note, you know, look, look at the bank, the flags. That's all, that's all limestone, I believe. That's real material. And when you put up an imitation type Stucco, it's a Stucco, it's not imitation, but it's, it's just not as elegant as your interior. I really feel that, I don't know what to say, I don't want to be the designer on this. You are, but some other stone material that's dark that would work with your, and I'm not going to pick what granite or whatever, you know, that's, that you, but you've, this, you, you've got Capital Grill right next, down the street. You've, you know, there's ocean prime just a little ways away. Using dry it on this location next to the other one that's all stone, it just kind of like, oh, we could, almost, we're there. And I would love to see you go over that, over the top on this. Not, you know, it's, it deserves, this is a, this is a prime, prime place that really should be looked at. I just, I just echo what his feeling there about the dry it.
Thank you.
Yep.
I, in, in relationship to Mr. Grant's comments, I think we're better off since we speak through resolutions to maybe-
Include those.
Include those estimations of-
Yep.
I don't mind approving it, but I-
Yeah, alright.
I'm not up to it.
See if there's any other-
Any other comments or questions? I think we're ready for a resolution.
I just lost my page, isn't that long?
It's 41.
Forty-one?
Yes.
I'll have a whack at it unless somebody else would like-
Page nine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Page nine, yeah.
Yeah, that's the other, okay.
That's the other one.
Alright.
So just so we're clear, is there, there's, I have some slides here that indicated that a lot of these issues were addressed. But there are some additional concerns, issues, whatever word you want to use, that were raised by the planning commission this evening.
But I think, do you want me to include the 30 foot to bring the patio within 30 feet and?
What, what I'm suggesting is, the first time we saw these, this, this information was tonight. I agree, they're, they're professionals.
Yep.
We can move forward. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that we have not been officially provided with this information in a plan form, so.
We should-
These should stay here. Call them out.
Yep.
That were, that are in their existing resolution and add whatever other items you have to that.
Thank you. I'll do that. Okay. This is resolution PC dash 2016 dash three dash, it'll be assigned, resolved. The planning commission hereby approves a parking space deviation of five spaces, bringing the total spaces provided to 131 spaces when 136 spaces are required by zoning ordinance. We have finally resolved that preliminary site plan approval pursuant to Article Eight of the zoning ordinance as requested for the proposed Eddie V's Prime Seafood Restaurant located on the north side of Big Beaver and west of Crooks, Section 20, within the Big Beaver District be granted subject to the following. Number one, pull the patio, part of the over, with partial overhang over the patio within 30 feet. I'm going to give them that. I would love to see the awnings on top of tables. Two, integrate more of the vertical column elements into the port, porta-
Coche.
Coche. Thank you. To better screen the vehicular, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to pass on that part. And the reason I'm saying that is, I think, I think again to, the hedges are going to do the job of screening the traffic lights. I don't know if we should, I mean, how many more pillars do we need to support that roof? I don't know. I'm just going to, I'm going to allow them to have some flexibility there. Sorry, Brent.
That's not included, is it?
Yeah, I'm going to include number two. Not unless you have some further up.
When you finish, I'll just-
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead. Three, provide an additional street tree along Alpine Road.
Right of way.
Oh, right of way, I'm sorry. Five, provide required landscape transition. That's, at what point do we put the landscape transition in at? Provide required landscape transition? Can you show that for the audience?
It's not a property, but the core of the applicant, they're going to keep the six foot wall there.
Oh, okay.
So we don't have to have-
We don't have to have number five, alright. Number six?
Did you skip four?
Pardon?
Did you skip four?
Oh, yeah, four, you did. I did. Four, provide detail of masonry wall. I'd like to, I'd like to see what you're going to cover that with. You're just going to leave it cinder block or?
No, no, no. We eliminated the, it's a 30 inch wall and we eliminated that and we're going to do it with natural-
Oh, and that part?
Correct.
Oh, I thought you, I, I thought it was on the northern part of the parking lot you're talking about. Is that not what we're talking about?
There were two.
Okay.
But the transition, landscape transition, unfortunately in the original supplemental that we sent out, we did not call out that there was the existing wall that was to remain.
Okay.
So that was the question on the transition.
Alright, so we'll leave five out of there.
The, the other was, was a 30 inch wall, which is an option of either using a low wall or using natural hedge, hedge type product, and that's what we've decided to do.
Stephen, if you're interrupting, but I, I think I'd like to make a suggestion that, you know, Bob Schultz would say, let's take a 10 minute break and let me compose a resolution. I am totally confused now, I mean, all these discussions as to what this resolution is.
But we can always have Kathy read it back to us.
You could do that to her.
I'm confused right now.
She's good, I tell you. Let's, let's try it that way, but I, I understand. There's nobody who wants to take a break more than I do, so.
Alright, number six, screen transformer. That's simple. Number seven, provide transparency calculation, which you have, but it should be noted that it needs to be in the official plans. Number eight, consider alternative materials than EFS for the primary exterior material along Alpine and Big Beaver. Number nine, provide detail of the ballard fixtures. Now, you did show one, but we're going to, I'm going to add, number 10, provide details for pedestrian lighting along the sidewalk on Big Beaver. That's-
Add additional ballards.
Additional, additional lighting. Number 10, or number 11, widen Alpine Road from your northmost exit off of Alpine all the way to Big Beaver. Widen it, yes?
That's an offset improvement that-
We can't-
The management has no authority in requiring the widening of a road. We can certainly-
Suggest.
Suggest that they work with the engineering department to do that.
Okay, okay. Number 11 is a suggestion to work with engineering to widen Alpine Road between your northernmost entrance off of Alpine to Big Beaver.
Okay, now, before we get a second, in deference to Mr. Hudson, which I think is a valid question. Kathy, are you prepared to read it back as, as is Mr. Grant?
Are we done with the conditions?
There's one more.
Yeah, I think the-
Oh.
Best management, centrally review the site for other best management practices for stormwater.
Right.
You got that Kathy?
Yes.
I'll, I'll just let the-
I think before we have a second, we want to at least get this correct.
Yeah, get it back.
Can I just go ahead with the conditions? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yes, oh, yeah, right, right.
Pull the patio and partial overhang over the patio to within 30 feet of Big Beaver. We are not doing number two. So number three will be number two. Provide an additional street tree along Alpine right of way. Provide detail of masonry wall, 30 inch wall or natural hedge.
We're going to, we're going to eliminate that one.
Eliminate that, okay.
Yep.
Screen transformer, provide transparency calculations that need to be on the official plan. Consider alternative material than EFS for primary exterior material along Alpine and Big Beaver. Provide detail of ballard fixtures, provide details for pedestrian lighting along the sidewalk on Big Beaver. And 11 would be worth of the engineering department. To widen Alpine from the northernmost exit of Alpine.
I think we can't put that in.
They can recommend it. We can recommend it.
It's a recommendation at that point, not a condition.
Recommendation to work with engineering, okay? And 12, to review the site for other best management practices for stormwater management.
Okay, now, is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, support.
Mr. Sanzico. Okay, discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I've got some.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hudson.
If I were the applicant, I'd be here scratching. He hasn't got as much hair as I do, but just about the same. Figuring out just what the heck we meant by provide details. Okay, he provides details. What if we don't like him? What if we like him? I think it's too nebulous.
Mr. Tagel?
Can I ask Mr. Sanzico a clarification? These requirements or stipulations we're putting on there are coming to you for administrative approval or, they're, they're not, it's not coming back to the, to the planning commission? Is that true or is it coming back?
The recommendation was to grant preliminary site plan approval. We would see them as part of, they'd submit them in as part of their final application. Then I would, I would see them. So administratively, I would look at them.
And, and just to Mr. Hudson's point, do you understand when you say provide details of whatever, do you understand what we're looking for?
I think so. I mean, I, I would agree with Mr. Hudson. You know, there's, there's some, did you use the word nebulous?
Yes. Sure is.
One of them, like, consider EFS. I'm considering EFS and I don't want to, I'm going to keep doing EFS.
I think it was-
That's nebulous.
But it's, but it's a-
Right.
It's a consideration of all the materials.
If the intent of the planning commission is for Mr. Taylor and his team to, to put an honest, an honest foot forward and strongly consider and you trust them to, to do their, you know, give it the good old college try and if, and if, and if it doesn't work, then come back with EFS, you're okay with that, then fine. That's what you're asking is to consider. You're not requiring your consideration.
That's what seems to be on the table. I just wondered, is that what we wanted to do? Or did we have a definite idea?
I heard Mr. Mr. Tagel, who knows a lot more about EFS than I do, say that it's not a deal breaker. He'd like them to consider it. So that's what it sounded like to me. That's a resolution that's on the table.
That's exactly what I said. So yes, I'm, I'm not dictating that they use an alternate material of higher quality. I think it would be in their best interest to do that and that's what I'm asking them to consider.
Takes care of that one.
But I think that's accurate then. Can I, can I just make it about the fins? I would agree, I think Mr. Tagel said that the draw, that the color drawings that were provided were dark. I would agree because this is, this is the, the element that's going to pop and it's going to, you know, define what, what this is. That's what we're provided. But this is what it's really going to look like.
At night.
At night. So, I mean, I, I can understand why he wouldn't want to put more fins in here because this is, this is really, this really pops at night. It really does. So, I get it.
Related to his question, would the EV beyond those fins, like it is there?
Yes, it will.
I like that. Are you all okay, Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I, I have no problem giving discretion to the applicant. Looks like a great plan. I'm pleased with what he has done. But in my mind, you know, a resolution says what will be done. If this commission says, yeah, okay, let the applicant go ahead with what he got, it looks good to me. I'm okay with that, but maybe just a philosophical difference in a resolution.
Mr. Grant?
I can, I don't think we can make mandatory a specific type of material he puts on his building in this case, can we? I mean, we can't, we can't say you've got to use granite. I mean, we can't do that. So I-
That's why I left, left to the discretion of the applicant. Yeah, it's a recommendation.
Anyone else? Everybody okay with the resolution? If not, this is the time to bring it up. Okay, I need a second at this point.
My second.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Sanzico. Any further discussion? If not, the roll call, please.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzico?
Yes.
Mr. Tagel?
Yes.
Mr. Apahidian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. We really look forward to this. This is what we all want to see along the street.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you for considering Troy.
Yes, thank you. Very excited about bringing this on.
I'm here about a spring of 2017 opening.
Spring of 2017 is what's on the schedule today.
Good, great. We don't want to hold you up.
You know, we are, we're already growing. So we're moving fast. I kind of understand, it helps you get to the permitting process.
Okay. Yes, Mr.?
This could be, this could be as quick or as long as you want. Typically, when we talk about delistings, they're very short. So really quick, we have a historic preservation ordinance, it's chapter 11 of our court of ordinances. And it includes a list of properties that are listed as historic, as historic properties. There's probably about 50 of them. This is one of them. This is on 3645 Crooks. This is the entrance to Bull and Park, Bull and Parkway here. This, this building, you may recognize it, if you're familiar with it. It is, it was for decades our engineering field office. So although zone residential, it's been used as a field office for decades. Prior to that, it was an insurance office. At the time of its listing, this, this building, which is built in the mid 1800s, was you, was actually an insurance, an insurance office. The interior has been gutted. If you, there's some pictures that, that were divided, where you see the zoning. The interior is, 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 has no semblance of, this is historic. There's nothing historic inside, but outside, there's, there's vinyl siding, there's a metal door. There's, they did a really poor job of repairing the foundation. The, the city was the steward of this, you know, you see, you see just how kind of shoddy I keep in the building. No offense to Troy. But in terms of, of a historic resource, it really wasn't, I don't, I don't think, since, since even before it was, it was listed, there was really a lot of care given to protecting the integrity of the building. It went to auction, it was purchased by someone who wants to have flexibility to, to improve the inside of the building and the outside of the building, but do not want to be tied to making it, to basically bringing it back to what it was even before it was listed and owned by the city of Troy. So they seek a recommendation from the planning commission. There was, there was a public hearing of the Historic District Study Committee. The committee recommended that it be delisted and we're asking for, the committee is asking the planning commission to make a recommendation and they would prefer that it be to delist this property.
Well, I'm going to be the curmudgeon here tonight, but-
That's good. I'm looking at it from a lawyer's standpoint and the ordinance requirements. And I'm not going to read it, but Michigan State Historic Preservation Office gave an opinion, very factual, and said, this delisting did not meet any one of the three requirements for a delisting. And I happen to agree. I haven't seen anything in there which directly pertains to a delisting. We certainly, I guess, can act and ultimately we might well act as a clearinghouse, saying that's an old building, doesn't look good. You want to get rid of it and put something in there that looks good to the rest of the city. That's not the standards that we use. Fact report says, let me read part of it. "When delisting a resource, the study report must show one of three things. How the property has lost its integrity, how it is not significant in any way previously defined or in any way established pursuant to defective procedures. In our opinion, the report does not provide the documentation to meet any of these three requirements." I happen to agree with that. I haven't seen any facts which would support a conclusion as to one of these three. Now, is anyone going to take an appeal? Probably not. And probably we're going to vote to delist it. But I, I can't in good conscience vote to delist it based upon what I've seen in these reports.
Would you prefer to just postpone this?
No, no, let's go ahead with it. You know, I've got my objections, but I may be the only one here.
Well, I think you raised some interesting points. Ms. Cruz?
I picked up on that very same thing, Mr. Hudson, that, that you just pointed out. And then read everything else in support of the delisting and sort of thought to myself that, that sometimes, you know, you have a precedent or you have a law and then you make the decision that it needs to- or you have a law, and then you make the decision that it needs to be changed, or it's bad law, or it's time to do something different. And when I look at that building, and I look at the inside of it, and I look at what surrounds it, and I look at the recommendations from the committee, and I look at the language that indicated that it was given historical significance after it was already altered, then that makes me think maybe it shouldn't have been given historical significance to begin with. Maybe that was an error. So I hear what you're saying, and I don't disagree, but I would say that in this instance, it probably appears that delisting it would be best.
Mr. Sanz.
Here we go. I'm blanketing this discussion, because I noticed in the memo, the cover memo, that I indicated that the minutes were included, they were not. But these are the minutes, I apologize for that. So at the public hearing in February, I presented the final report, and mentioned this, the letter from the state of Michigan that Mr. Hudson wrote. The committee disagreed with the letter from the state of Michigan, and concurred that the property had been listed in error, as its character had been significantly diminished before it was listed. Mr. Salgat, who's a committee member, noted, the historic significance of the home as listed in the building structure inventory form was that Riley Crooks once lived on the property. However, Mr. Crooks died in eighteen thirty. The home was constructed around eighteen fifty-three. He'd been dead for twenty-three years before the house was built. He never, he never was in the house. Therefore, that was a finding of an error, and one of the reasons for it being listed. Here's kind of the kicker. The committee agreed the building's interior and exterior had been significantly altered from its original character when converted to an office use. This alteration occurred prior to being listed as a historic property. The integrity of the property is noncompliant to historical resource standards, and historic character has been eliminated. For this reason, the committee supports delisting.
Mr. Sanz, that was in our packet.
It wasn't in the packet, I apologize. I just went through it and couldn't find it.
No.
It's nine thirty, and it's a hundred and fifty degrees in there, so I apologize.
Well, let me say, just in rebuttal. According to a Field Guide to American Homes, Greek revival was the dominant style of America domestic architecture during the interlude from eighteen thirty to eighteen sixty. Thus, this house is from the earliest major period of settlement in the state of Michigan. Yeah, you can go both ways. I'm not gonna live or die on this vote, so don't get too concerned about my opinion.
I feel like an attorney, yeah, in court, I mean.
Okay, which-
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Apoheidian.
Does delisting allow the new property owner or the current property owner to basically do whatever they want with the property?
Yes, as per our codes, yes.
Meaning potentially completely demolish?
Potentially.
Is it still zone residential?
Yes. So it's zone residential, it cannot be used for an office, the noncompliance has been eliminated. So to even bring it back to residential, they've gotta invest anyways. That's one of the challenges, I think. And I think that wasn't made clear to the state, but anyways. Good point by you, Mr. Hudson.
Okay, the proposed resolution is located on page ninety-seven of our packet.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I resolve that the planning commission hereby supports the delisting of thirty-six forty-five Crooks Road. That's for the recommendation of the historic district study today.
I'll support, Mr. Grant. Further discussion? If not, the roll call, please, Mrs. Zarniky.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzeca?
Yes.
Mr. Tagel?
Yes.
Mr. Apoheidian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faiza?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Hey.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
And we don't have to bother to ask the reason for the no vote?
Yeah, you made it quite clear.
Okay, the next last item is public comment. So let's begin tonight with Mr. Sanzeca. I'm sorry, public comment, I'm sorry, I'm on the high-
Under the public?
High public.
At some time.
Is, this, number seven is public comment for items on the current gen, seeing no one else in the room. We'll go on to number eight, planning commission comment, Mr. Sanzeca.
I just have to say that I thoroughly enjoyed the retreat. It was well done. I, quite honestly, when we went in there, I was surprised, to say the least, and especially after my trip to Asheville and supporting that concept. And I, quite honestly, I had thought of a Kmart site, but once we started discussing the community center, it just made so much sense. And I have to say, I've known Bob Gibbs for over thirty years. And he's just a very professional and a very astute planner. And I, I'm really happy to hear that he's gonna be involved. So I accolades to the management, and I'm really happy to see him move ahead.
Mr. Tagel.
Yeah, I support what Phil said. We very enjoy the weekend, very educational. And again, I, from people I've talked to, I think Mr. Gibbs would be a good team player to help us see what the opportunities are in that person.
Ms. Cruz.
I'll echo my two colleagues that have already spoken on how spectacular and outstanding the retreat was. And then, I wanna say I'm looking forward to next year. And then, I want to point out a couple of things that I heard tonight from applicants. With respect to the applicant on the K nine club, one of the things that he pointed out to us as a planning commission is that his application was variance free. He also referenced the master plan and said, it's what we want our city to become. And then I noticed with Eddie V's tonight, with that application, we're tearing down a three-story building, and in its place, we're putting a one-story building. And also with respect to Eddie V's, we talked about the stucco material that they're going to put on the restaurant after considering others. And we've talked about quality standards that we wanna have along the Big Beaver corridor. And so I raise these issues just to, again, underscore the need that we have to review our ordinances and to do what it is that we can to the language that currently exists in the ordinances to allow us to look at the master plan and make Troy the city we want it to become, and to improve the quality standards when we don't want stucco or something that we know is of lower quality to be on the outside of a Big Beaver corridor building. And that was something that we sort of talked about amongst ourselves at the retreat. And so I'm really imploring not only the city attorney's office, but the planning department to help us and give us what it is that we need so that we can actually effectuate all of the things that we want this city to become and the great ideas that come before us, and in particular, if we're going to look closely at that civic center area. So I would like to see some progress made in that area.
Mr. Apoheidian?
I echo Ms. Cruz's echo.
Thank you.
I thoroughly enjoyed the retreat as well. I think it was a great experience to actually have such a large number of staff in planning commission and the DDA there, and be able to just kind of look at the great potential that we have as a city to evolve from being great to being even greater. So I definitely think it was a great experience.
Mr. Faiza?
So really briefly, I agree with everything. I thought the weekend was great, and for me, it showed me what it could be, right? The potential. So it was a visual manifestation of that. And to Ollie's point, sitting at the table with a group of people with diverse backgrounds, you know, engineers, planning folks, was very helpful to me as well, so, thanks.
Ms. Cooper?
So I'm gonna start by saying I hope everybody voted tonight. I got to see my younger child's vote, he's not eighteen, but he found out that he could exercise his civic duty, because by the general election, he will be eighteen, so it's good to live in a democracy. Second thing I'm going to say is, the retreat was phenomenal. Both Mr. Gibbs and the mayor, the mayor from Carmel almost had me wanting to move to Carmel. And it was very good to be able to interact with a lot of different people from within the community who believe in what Troy can potentially be. One concern I have about tonight's Eddie V's approval that we gave is that we are attracting another seafood restaurant. I would like to see us have something a little bit more diverse. The reason I asked for the menu is, we want young people here, young people don't eat only at swanky, upscale seafood places. They also want more locavore, more vegetarian, little bit different styles. So we really need to think about that as well. And I do agree with Ms. Cruz about the one-story. If we're trying to build up Big Beaver to have yet one more one-story building, it's kind of disappointing.
Mr. Hudson.
I did not attend the study session, I had a previous engagement out west, but-
You mean the retreat?
Yes, the retreat, but I'm envious of you attending. I would very much like to have attended that. It sounds like it was a great experience, and hopefully, we can build on whatever was discussed and agreed about.
Thank you. Mr. Grant.
Ditto. And then, the only thing I wanted to add was, I thought management did an incredible job of preparing for that meeting. The amount of work that went in, it was involved, I could see that, it said it was like a six-month project. It looked like a six, it felt like a six-month project for them to get off the ground. And I especially appreciated the overlays they provided with Birmingham and Royal Oak to go over our civic center to show you what that footprint really is and how much potential we really have at that civic center site.
I totally agree, they, it's probably the best two days I think I've ever spent at a retreat. And the number of people, the complexity of all their backgrounds, it really was great. And I totally agree with the exercises. The one thing I was, just became totally frustrated, is that Lego thing. I wanted to say, we don't want middle people involved in this. We want the architect to work directly with the people doing it, so. Anyway, that was good. I just have, and I do support Ms. Cruz's, I think that we need to look at our standards and ordinances, hopefully, maybe on some type of a periodic review. The one other thing I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, the next city council meeting has the, how do I say it, oil and gas extraction? That's gonna be the public hearing? It's a public hearing? Great. And so I think it might behoove us, because we unanimously said, this is what we want. And I think you all received today the article, the link to the article about the church in Southfield, that they approved, which to me, just blows my mind, that here we have the DEQ person saying before, there will never be, with all doubt, there will never be an exploration well in Oakland County. Well, this just shows, it's not. And I wanna see that sent to the city manager, if it hasn't been done already. Mr.?
Not to correct your statement, but I will.
Okay.
The gentleman from DEQ, and again, not to defend DEQ either. The gentleman from DEQ said that he believed unless there was a glaring improvement in technology, there'd never be fracking in Oakland County. I don't think he ever said there would never be an exploratory well.
Well, yes, okay.
Yeah.
And how about the guy from the oil, the oil industry? Didn't he say that, it's not likely?
I think he was talking about fracking, but I could be wrong with that.
Well, I really encourage you to send that to the city manager and ask him to provide that to all the city council members before they make their decision. And I would also encourage any of you who could make that meeting next Monday night to do so. That's all I have.
It's the first meeting, planning commission meeting we've had in the tournament fourteen years, and hopefully, we don't have another one here before.
Mr. Carlisle?
No comment.
Mr. Dawson?
No, thank you.
Okay, Kathy?
No, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.